Okay, let's begin the work session this evening. We're going to be doing this in advance of the regular council meeting, which will be happening a couple of minutes after this. So we'll have a couple minute break after this and then quickly scurry to our seats for the regular council meeting this evening. Tonight, we're going to be talking about getting a system update in terms of the Madbury Water Plant, and we're going to start with our city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dave Allen is here along with Peter Rice and Brian Getz from the city staff to give you a review of the Portsmouth Water System, specifically the Madbury Water Treatment Plant. And I won't, I know that they have a nice presentation, so I won't go into any more detail. I'll let them get started and right away. Go ahead.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As we did a week and a half ago, giving you an overview on the wastewater system and treatment plant, likewise, we're going to give you this update on our water system and the treatment plant. But before I get into that too far, I just, I know you all know Peter Rice from previous presentations and working for the city, but Brian Getz is probably new to you folks. He is, he's been with us for about a year and a half as our Water Resource Manager. And Brian has about 18 years of experience in the water industry and has been especially, you know, a specialty in his, his work has been source development and source water supply and operations. He's responsible for all of our water production, both the wells and the water treatment plant up in Madbury. And in addition to that, he's working on our, our source water augmentation, which you'll hear about a little more tonight, and source water optimization, and again, also into our conservation programs, which are all wrapped into our system. And I think likewise, on our, when we talked about our wastewater system and the treatment plant, it's important to understand that it is a system and that the treatment plant doesn't stand out there by itself, but it is a system. So we, we are going to give you an overview of some of the other parts of the system that are vitally important to running a water treatment plant. So we're going to do a little introduction, and I'm going to give you a little system overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to Peter, and he will be talking about the, some of the studies that we've done, that we base our decisions on, and the infrastructure program that comes out of those studies. And then Brian will be talking about our sources and some of the water quality issues that we're dealing with, and permitting and regulatory issues, which are, which drive our program, and as well as the water treatment plant issues, and then I will be summarizing that. As a way of introduction, all of the work that we do falls under legislation that was created under the Safe Drinking Water Act back in 1974. And as in the wastewater side, we work very closely with the Environmental Protection Agency and the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. They are the ones that, that write the rules and enforce the rules. Ultimately, it is the water system, it is the City of Portsmouth Water Division that is responsible for that compliance and the long-range planning. And to that end, you'll see tonight that we've worked on master plans, just as we have the master plan for the city. And on the wastewater side, we have done master planning for the water system, and that's the basis of our program. So, again, we are regulatory-based. The program and our master plan is reviewed by DES. It is a, based on drinking water standards. It is based on regulatory policy, science, and economics. And the plan also focuses on sustainable water resource management. It's one of the key reasons we brought Brian on board. He's got a lot of experience in dealing with, with getting the most out of our sources in a sustainable manner. And as our master plan had, had indicated, sustainability was an important focus for the water and wastewater systems. We've incorporated that into our plan. Just a little history, the Portsmouth system actually started in 1797 as the Portsmouth Aqueduct System. The city actually took it over in 1891. 1930, the, began chlorinating water. 1957 was an important time because that's when the federal government came in, took the land at Peas that contained a number of our water sources. And then they created the, put in three wells up in Madbury, which they started up, and they were not able to adequately replace the, the sources that they took over at Peas. So they then had to create the Bellamy Reservoir and construct the water treatment plant to treat that water. And interestingly, that was 1957, and one of the, one of the first things that Brian said to me when he came on board and he started running that treatment plant, I'm stealing some of his thunder, but he said, you know, "This plant is a lot like a 1957 Chevy. A great car in its day. It can still drive, can still do the things a car has to do, but it doesn't meet emissions standards, it doesn't have airbags, and it only gets eight miles to the gallon." So, you know, with that, under that context, that's, that's where we are with that water treatment plant. And then we have our 1993, we actually got those sources back on Peas, three wells that we're currently running. We are a regional water system. Our sources start up at, up at Madbury, there's our reservoir right there. The water travels about five miles down to our Madbury Water Treatment Plant. From there, it's treated, it combines with our three wells there and comes down into the, into Newington, where our booster station is. We have 7,000 customers, 1,000 commercial customers, about 30,000 people are served by Portsmouth Water. We serve all of Newington, all of Newcastle, all of Portsmouth, parts of Greenland, and a portion of Rye, and all of Peas. About 55% of our water is coming from that Madbury Reservoir, 45% from groundwater, and about 60% of the water we produce is consumed in Portsmouth, and about 40% is actually consumed outside of Portsmouth. Our system-wide, again, there's our, our Madbury Reservoir up in the upper left-hand corner there. We have our three wells in Madbury, our water treatment plant in Madbury. We have six water storage tanks. Those provide both volume that we would need, and they also create the pressure that, that drives our system. We have three wells on Peas, two wells within Portsmouth, one well in Greenland. And I'm going to turn this now over to Peter. He's going to talk a little bit about some of those studies and the, the infrastructure improvement program.
Thanks, Dave. As Dave was saying, we completed a number of, of master plans, and they were Phase One and Phase Two plans. The, the Phase One Plan looked at the, the infrastructure associated with distribution, which is the pipes in the ground that brings the water from the reservoir and the treatment plant to the home, including the, as well as the tanks that Dave was talking about. The Phase Two portion of the, the master plan looked at our sources, which are wells, the reservoir, and as well as the treatment plant, and looked at the, the capacity of those things. The Phase One portion of the master plan looked at the hydraulics of our system. That, that looks at pipe capacity, how much water can it move, pressures and things like that, make sure there's adequate fire flow capacity and things like that. It then took that information and created kind of a phased plan for our water distribution system upgrades, and then looked at our capacity of our water tanks and determined the adequacy of those tanks. The, the Phase Two portion of this looked more in terms, put it more of a regulatory context, because of the changing regulatory environment that we, we live in, there's impacts to our system. So in addition to the regulations and aging, aging infrastructure, you had to look at the regulations. We looked at the supply, the adequacy of the supply, as well as the demand, the 25-year projection on the demand, and determined what is a sustainable yield. And when I say sustainable, that means how much can you reliably use in a drought year? Everybody's watering the lawns, you know, what, what's the impact, and do we have enough water? So we looked at those conditions, and we looked at the future demands as well. And then finally, we looked at the adequacy of the treatment plant. As Dave said, it's a 57, 50 Chevy. It's a lot of fun to drive in its day, but it's, it's not up to snuff now. So the, the major conclusion from the study, the Phase Two portion of the study, was that the existing water plant needs to be upgraded. The tanks, the six tanks that we looked at had adequate capacity, however, the maintenance needed to be dealt with, and given the age of the tanks and the materials that were used, at times, it's more cost-effective to replace the tank. The bottom tank here is the, is the Spiny Road Tank, which was a recently replaced tank, and at the time, we gained capacity and, and built a better, easier-to-maintain This is a picture of our Bellamy Reservoir. The dam here was evaluated to determine its, its structural integrity, it's in okay structural shape, but the intake structure where the water gets into the system needs to be worked on, and we looked at some additional upgrades to improve management of that resource. In addition, something called a bathymetric survey was done. What that means is that the actual bottom of the, the reservoir was, was surveyed to determine the contours and how much volume was in that. And then we looked at rain records and run of stream records, which means how much water's going through the streams, and determine what a safe yield of that water body was. And that was used for future planning. The nine wells were looked at to determine their, their integrity and what needed to be dealt with at each well. As I said, the supply was looked at, and this, this graph just shows that our sources have, you know, our general sources, the treatment plant, which is the Madbury Reservoir, is about half of our capacity, and the remainder are the, the wells in Madbury, Portsmouth, and Peas. And this is an example of our annual water use. As you can see, each bar represents a month, and depending upon the time of year, the water use increases. Obviously, the summertime irrigation demands and, and water use increases. So the recommendations from the Phase Two Master Plan were to, first of all, pursue water conservation when possible. Brian will talk a little bit more about that. It's, it's part of our major component of our water system. Operate our wells and our reservoir in a sustainable management manner, and Brian's working on that to better manage our water resources. It also looked at upgrading the wells to perform their performance, to maximize how much water we can get out of them, and then develop additional sources when possible and augment, what we call source augmentation, improve the, how much water we can get out of the existing wells at the same time. And then finally, construct a new water plant. Some of the projects that we've completed since these reports have, have been done, the middle to Congress Water Main, Lafayette to Middle Water Main, the Spiny Road Water Tank, Dennis Street Water Main, Upper Court Street Water Main project. As, if you recall, I talked a little bit about the work we did at Court Street, where we did water sewer, drain, streetscapes. Similar to wastewater, on the water side, we try to leverage our, our projects and do as much as we can for, stretch the dollars whenever possible. We also completed a, a job out in Peas, Water Main upgrade at the Corporate Drive. We completed a corrosion control program, which was a regulatory-driven program in upgrade, and then we finally did an upgrade to the motor control center, which was an old motor system on the treatment plant. As we were doing this, we developed a hydraulic model of our, of our water system. What this shows you is kind of an overview of the city, and each of these blue lines represents water pipes of different sizes throughout the city. And this model is used to predict impacts. If you, if you, if a new development goes in, we run the, we run the system to determine, is there adequate piping there, and is it, you know, what are the impacts to the system? This is a picture of a Water Main upgrade we did. This was, Water Main was replacing an 1895 Water Main that fed downtown. That's a 115-year-old water pipe. We got, we got our money's worth out of that. We plan on getting this 100-year investment out of this pipe as well. So when we're doing infrastructure like this, it is a long-term investment. This figure shows some of our, it shows a picture of our GIS system. What, what we do is we code each section of pipe, and we know the ages of the pipe, we know the condition of the pipe, and we're able to go through and inventory them. And when we're making decisions, when we're doing upgrades and things like that, we can prioritize things better. And, and we use that information, as we pointed out in the wastewater side of things, we're doing sewer separation programs. So we take that inventoried information, and when we're doing the sewer work, we can, we can identify the water mains that need to be upgraded at the same time and, and leverage the funds. As I said before, this is our newest water tank, it's a Spiny Road Tank. And at this point, I'd like to pass the presentation over to Brian Getz, who talked about water quality and the steps we're taking towards a new treatment plant.
Thank you, Peter, and it's great to be here. Appreciate your time, giving us opportunity here to give you an overview of the, the water system as a whole and, and projects that are underway. Just went the wrong direction. There we go. As, as David said, and Peter followed up, that there is quite a history to this water system, and the thing about the existing sources and the supply issues, the, the actual quality of the, the raw water, the source water that we get, has a very good history of, of good quality and reliable yields. However, as David and Peter said, we've got some old infrastructure out there and some renovations that are needed out there, as well as some additional new sources are necessary to provide the backup. Some of the, the graphics Peter showed, you know, we'll have some peak months, average day of, of 6 million gallons a day, and, and we're just a little over 7 million gallons a day on the supply. So we are reaching a, a point where, when we're running the system at a peak demand, if, if we were to lose a source or have a problem mechanically or, or quality-wise, that, you know, we would need the, the backup. So that's why we're looking at additional sources or improving what we have to give us that backup. And again, as, as we've said, the, these regulations have driven some of the needed work in the system, not just the age, but together with that age are some more stringent quality regulations that are all really been kicked off back in 1974 with the Safe Drinking Water Act. This is a little snapshot from the EPA website, good history of when they had the 25-year anniversary, they did a history and trends, and some of those trends and history are right here. Again, in '74, they set the Safe Drinking Water Act. Prior to that, there were some regulations, but they were parsed out into individual states, and, and there was no continuity. The EPA, through the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act, put it under one umbrella, initially set the standards for 18 water quality parameters. In '86, they came back with some additional amendments, which gave more standards, and then they also addressed lead and copper, which was an issue that was coming to light through some new testing. '96 amendments, looked at further additional regulations, compliance reporting, consumer confidence reporting. And, and the additional bullet, it just says that these regulations are ongoing, they're not set, they're, they're continuing to promulgate new regulations that in fact are in place January of this year, that, that were not in place last year. And there actually is about a threefold increase of regulations since 1974 that water systems have to comply with. Part of this compliance is, is done in-house. This is our chemist, Peter Armstrong, doing some daily analysis up in our laboratory at, at the Madbury Facility. He does a number of things, as does our other staff, but we also send samples out to certified laboratories based on the, the needed sampling and required sampling in the water system. All of these samples, all this analysis is reported annually in our water quality report. If you're a customer of our system, you get one of these mailed to you every year, but also historically, and, and even today, right now, you can pull this up on the website. Not only is the most recent water quality report available, there's five years of additional water quality reports there historically. And it's a very thorough report, gives you a lot of general information, but it also gives you the contact information for water quality data outside of the, the city, but also contact information for additional people, questions you may have with the city. Some of the things that we're looking at right now that are driving some of the new regulations, disinfection byproducts, David mentioned in 1930, chlorination was, was put into the system, which is a great step forward for, for water systems, but with science, they've seen that there are some disinfection byproducts formed. That's one of the things we're addressing with the water treatment plant. We're, we're in compliance with those that present, but there are some potential regs that are going to make it much tougher to do in, in years to come. The lead and copper requirements, we had a brief violation back in, a couple years ago, that was, as Peter mentioned, met with, through the, lead and copper compliance. We are doing much better with that due to that program. And some news items and, and information has been out there regarding MTBE, both in the state and locally. Must stress right now that no wells are above that limit for MTBE, and we do sample at least quarterly at our sources and more often at some that, that show some potential. And MTBE, the issue with that is it, it is still in gas, so, you know, it's out there, the product is, is in the environment, and, and we have to be very vigilant to, to keep an eye on the sources. Another issue on the more stringent federal regulations were the, the turbidity violation that occurred last year at our water treatment plant. Again, this was mailed directly to customers, and this really was, was an event that in years past would have just been something addressed at the treatment plant, but it wouldn't have been a violation, and now it is. Pointed out, in fact, that this somewhat validated the master plans that said, "It's going to be difficult for this water plant to meet the new regulations." And there was, you know, this incident last year. We have improved some operations due to that. There's always lessons learned from events like this, but again, you know, it's tougher and tougher every day to put that quality water out that, when the standards get more and more difficult to meet. So why build a new treatment plant? I know that there's a lot of discussion there, the, the fact is that there has been a lot of engineering analysis, both in the master plans, but there have been engineers hired that did a pilot program and some additional more onsite analysis. And basically, the, the conclusion of that is the existing plant cannot meet the future water quality regulations. As they say, they're going to continue to get more difficult for surface water treatment plants, but also looking at, can you renovate this facility? Can you take the 57 Chevy and put a new engine in and put airbags and, and all the rest? And it's analogous to that. Yes, you could do it, but is it going to be cost-effective, and can you still drive that car while you're getting this work done? It'd be very difficult to do. So the analysis really came out with the fact that a new facility is going to be more cost-effective than rehabilitating this existing old facility. And additionally with that, it does take time to build a, a facility as large as a water plant. The car analogy is if today we decided, you know, we're going to buy the, the new Chevy, you'd drive it off the lot. Well, we can't drive a new water treatment plant off the lot, it's going to take a number of years, you know, both the design, build, fund, and actually implement, get the thing up and operating. But building a new facility is going to allow the existing one to stay in operation during the construction. We're going to be able to incorporate modern technologies to ensure the regulatory compliance. We're going to increase our reliability out of that facility. I mean, the existing facility, the reliability of it, you know, you've got some things that break down, some attention we have to do, and a new facility is going to be better in that respect. But it's also, we're going to shoot for making it more energy and operationally efficient, you know, new windows, everything else, insulation, you name it, just the ancillary parts of a building are going to be more efficient, as well as all the mechanics inside of it. So all that makes it more cost-effective to replace. Here's a little snapshot of in 2004 and '05, these little, these, these trailers were actual, a pilot program, this is inside the trailers. These are many treatment plants they brought on site. They took the source water, the same water that was going to the water treatment plant, ran it through these pilot water treatment plants on a much smaller scale, but the, the same thing as what a, a very large plant would be. Helped us pilot the, the technologies that were recommended and see how well they performed. And fortunately, one of them dissolved air flotation seems to be the, the one of choice and did, did fairly well out there when it was being looked at. Aside from the surface water, we are doing water on the groundwater system. We've got the capital plan, has some dollars earmarked from now until '08 to look at the recharge areas of our existing wells, so we can determine the best method to either replace or renovate those existing wells. The treatment plant dates back to 1957, but some of the wells date back to even earlier period of time than that, back in the, the early 1900s. So there, there's look to upgrade those, so that we can provide a better sustainable management of the resources, because if the facilities are working and efficiently operating, you don't have breakdowns, and you can choose that source that at the time has the best water available, so that you can possibly rest other sources that might be stressed. That helps you sustain your water, so when you get times of peak demand or any other emergency, you can rely on the water you have available in that way. And we're also going to look to provide additional backup sources of supply. And as Peter said, a big bullet point of the master plan of the water system, but as well as, as the city's master plan that just came out, is that the water and sewer policies should make use of best practices in environmental protection and provide incentives for conservation. With that in mind, we are going to launch a program, which, this is a little snapshot of, an example of, of what will be offered to all the residential customers in the system this spring. We're currently, right now, working with the finance department to solicit bids for these actual kits. And what it will be is a mailer that goes out to every residential customer, offers them an opportunity to, to get these kits that come with a low-flow showerhead, some low-flow faucet aerators, leak detection tablets, a toilet tank that, this thing is a toilet dam, can, you fill it up with water, you put it in the back of a high-flow toilet, it'll reduce the volume of water per flush. And also, there'll be, you know, some information developed by city staff and together with whoever we get as a vendor to talk about conservation, so really launch the program with the residential customers, with the intent that in subsequent years, we'll keep rolling further conservation programs out. And also, Peter Rice, working with engineering, they solicited some consultants to look at the water reuse project. This would be out at Peas to actually look at taking some of the treated wastewater and use it for irrigation purposes instead of, and this, this is kind of a dual purpose, as David said, and Peter too, also leverages some projects where you can address multiple issues, wastewater and water, and kind of go for the win-wins, win-win project. So with that, that would help reduce some of the peak demands irrigation-wise and help not only water, but the sewer. It would be a separate system, it wouldn't be part of the actual water that comes to the tap. With that, thank you, and I'll, I'll turn it back over to David for a summary.
Thank you, Brian. So just to kind of wrap this up, as far as the, the status of the treatment plant, we have the, we've been identifying this as a project since 2003 in our capital budget, and we have completed a pilot study that looked at the various different technologies that would specifically best work for the water that we get out of the Bellamy Reservoir. The council has authorized the city to, to get design money through the state revolving fund. We have gone that route, and we've, we're in the process of putting together requests for proposals for design services, which would be done in FY07. And also during that time, we're going to be looking at the funding options. Unfortunately, on the water side, there is not as much money available as there is on the wastewater side in the SRF program, but we will be exploring that and, and looking at other potential sources. Then we would follow up with construction, following some sort of funding authorization, and look to bid and construct in FY09 and 1.0. So to summarize, you know, as in the wastewater side, we have a water system capital improvement plan that we, we're looking at the regulations and basing those improvements on meeting those regulations. We work closely with the DES, we work closely with EPA, and again, it's these regulatory policies, it's science, and it's, it's economics that are driving what we're doing. We're working to leverage the funding, just as Peter's mentioned, we're trying to get these projects wrapped in with either wastewater projects or highway projects to make sure we take care of our infrastructure, get as much as we can out of these projects. And we're focusing on the sustainable water resource management through programs like Brian described on the conservation program. And all, most of those programs, when we, when we're doing these upgrades, we're going to variable frequency drives, we're going to high-efficiency motors, all of those things go towards that sustainable effort. And with that, I will turn it back over to John.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. The city council next week, next Monday night, will be conducting a work session on the entire capital improvement plan for 2007 to 2012. And I provided you with copies of that this evening, and you'll have the opportunity to take a look at that document over the next week. The last two workshop sessions that we've had, the one with wastewater and tonight with the water, is to give you a more in-depth view of what's going to be identified in the capital improvement plan. So much of what we can, we can talk about on next Monday night, you'll have a better understanding as to the complexities of where we're headed rather than trying to explain it all in that particular night. So, Your Honor, we will have the opportunity, next Monday night, we'll be conducting the work session on the capital plan to further discuss this and give you timelines as well as how it fits into the cost schedule.
That's great. And with that, I'll take any questions or comments the councilors may have. Councilman Padala, go ahead.
Mr. Allen, are we working towards building a new building at Madbury before we stop and look at what USA Springs is doing? You know, they're very close to getting a permit to set up, and I understand that that is supposed to affect the Bellamy as well as any waters around that area.
Actually, we have looked at that, and the, I think a lot of that relative to to our particular water supply system is, there's quite a bit of hype in that. You know, we've looked at at what they're planning to do, and while it, the tip of what they're doing is near the edge of our watershed, that if that bottling plant went in, we would never know, it would not affect the Portsmouth water system.
And we have a guarantee. I mean, this, this water plant is going to go in, they're going to put it in there.
Dave, I think you're...
What I'm trying to say is, are we going to be safe in relying on that particular place?
Yeah, well, the, it would, the reservoir itself is, would stay where it is. The plant, we may, we will look at different options for relocating the plant, but their, their watershed is really outside of ours. It, so, so I, I'm very comfortable that, that we're in good shape with, with the reservoir where it is.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from any of the councilors? Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, sir. I'm very pleased. Could you, sorry. Yeah, that'd be good.
Thanks. I'm very pleased to see that our plans include, sounds like kicking off next year, a conservation promotion program. Have, and you did say that what you showed in terms of that kit for homeowners will be perhaps just the first step of a multi-year program. But I was wondering if we have done any analysis yet, or if perhaps we might, of the potential for a more, I guess sort of a larger scale or promotion of a more capital replacement type of conservation program at the, at the end-use level? What, how much potential there might be for us to reduce our, our demand in the future? What I'm getting at is, for example, if you distribute those kits and, and people put, say, that water dam in an old toilet, sometimes what you get in reducing the water flow in an old toilet is a toilet that doesn't flush very well. And then you, essentially, when people have a bad experience with conservation, they, they won't do it again. It's sort of like the old first compact fluorescent lamps that were distributed, they flickered and they didn't work very well, and people said, I tried those bulbs, you know, I'm never going to waste that money again. In, in cities that are leaders in sustainability around the country, Austin, Texas is one place comes to mind, but other cities have done things like promote homeowners replacing older toilets, say the three-point, whatever they were, six gallons flush with 1.6 gallon flush toilets that worked very well. And, and it's, they do it similar to the, say, the electric company in terms of catalog of products and bulk purchasing, and then they get them at a discount, and those can have a lot more substantial overall impact than, say, just a, you know, small measure replacements. Can you comment on that?
Actually, this is, the, the program that we're, we're looking at doing, Brian has actually had success at a previous water system that he worked at doing this. And, and we do understand that this is our first foray into this, and, and so, you know, we're going to start with something small and manageable that we know is successful in another system, and certainly, you know, we'll continue to look at this, you know, as we go forward on conservation. I, we've seen those programs, and we, we thought we'd start with something that we could get our hands around first before we grow into something larger.
And one thing I would add is, I know it's been discussed a few times, both last year and early this year, about the creation of a sustainability committee that would look at broader issues. And in the last few weeks, a lot of it has probably centered around energy in terms of how much is necessary with departments right now and the costs, and that's not insignificant by any means. But clearly, water usage is an important part of that as well, and there may be opportunities where folks may be able to, to assist in identifying ways to help out in that regard, but it's a valuable discussion to have, and hopefully that will be one of the charges of, of that, that committee. Okay, any other questions or comments by anybody around the table? Seem none? You wanted to make any final comments?
No, I think next week at the capital improvement work session, we'll be able to get into more detail on a number of these issues.
Very good.
Your Honor, will that be a work session around this table?
Yes.
Yep, similar format, will be televised again?
6:30 next Monday evening, and the capital plan is in front of you at the ADEAS tonight.
Very good. With that, thank you all very much. That was a great presentation. We will begin at 7:30. So it'll take a few minutes, we'll begin again at 7:30. Thank you.[1036.56]
All right, let's begin this evening with this meeting. If you could have the roll call, please.
Mayor Marchand.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Farini.
Here.
Council Grasso.
Here.
Council Dwyer.
Here.
Council Reynolds.
Here.
Council Penelakis.
Here.
Council Whitehouse.
Here.
Council Smith.
Here.
Council Hines.
Here.
Very good. Please rise. We will do the Pledge of Allegiance preceded by a moment of silence led by Assistant Mayor Tom Farini.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Let us move to the acceptance of the minutes of December 5th, 2005, December 19th, 2005, and January 9th of 2006. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, can we take those up as individuals?
Certainly. Let's begin with December 5th, 2005. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I still move, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. We'll move now to December 19th, 2005. Do I have a motion there?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain.
Abstain.
And finally, acceptance of minutes of January 9th, 2006. Do I have a motion there?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Let's move to the public comment session. I believe we have eight speakers this evening. Oh, no problem. There we go. We'll begin, and if you would, when you come up, if you could give your name and address as well, please, for the record. Let's begin this evening with Joel Karp to discuss the port of New Hampshire.
Good evening, Council, and as my first chance to greet all of you as a body, let me congratulate you on all of your newer renewed positions. I'm particularly glad to see the composition of this council. It's a nice blend of youth and vigor and experience and, I hope, wisdom. You're all going to have some very knotty problems to deal with, but you're dealing with them right now, as a matter of fact. And I view the more, the younger members of this council as sort of the young tigers who are trying to drag Portsmouth into the 21st century. I also see the more senior councilors here as sort of a sea anchor to keep us on a steady course and remind us of what makes Portsmouth what it is. So I think this blend is going to be a very, very auspicious one for all of, all of the citizens of New Hampshire. I should back up and say Joel Karp, 500 Market Street, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Sorry. The main point I wanted to bring up tonight was that I wanted just to remind you all and to urge all of you to keep the port issue on your active agenda. Improvements at the port would only benefit this city. And you made a valiant effort, those of you who were on last year, you made a valiant effort to get the PDA to close down the scrap and the salt business there. But unfortunately, you were ignored at that time. While the salt contract was just renewed again, the scrap contract will be coming up again in a few months. And it's never too early to use your bully pulpit to get these operations closed down. In the coming months, some of us citizens will be approaching you with suggested changes at the port. And we hope you will continue the effort that you all began last year. The composition of the PDA board has changed somewhat since you wrote your letter to them. There's a new chairman and two of the directors have changed. And I'm beginning to detect some signs that the climate there has shifted a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And it may be possible to actually have a dialogue with them now. I understand that with John Bohanko as a director there, he's, I understand, this is my understanding, it may not be correct, but he is required primarily to act in the interests of the PDA. I'd like to suggest that the council consider appointing a liaison to establish and maintain contact with the PDA on a regular and formal basis. And the advantage would be that that liaison will be acting solely in the interests of the city. So that's something for your consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. A quick note, I believe there is currently a liaison, and that would be our Assistant Mayor Tom Farini. Point taken.
Your Honor, I just, I typically wouldn't comment, but I think it's important to realize that I, as city manager, I always protect the interests of the city. Doesn't matter if I'm on the PDA or not.
Thank you very much. Okay, our second speaker this evening will be Tom Carroll, speaking about Market Street. And I realize I failed to mention ahead of time that, as has been the case for a while anyway, there's a three-minute limit to, for our speakers this evening. Nothing personal, just mentioning that, I failed to mention it before. Thank you.
Tom Carroll, 500 Market Street, local businessman here in Portsmouth. Welcome, board members. Welcome, Mr. Marchand, to the new seat. Congratulations. And again, I want to echo Joel in thanking you all for your efforts. I understand that that one piece of property here in your city is very uncontrollable sometimes. But your voices are extremely important. You speak for all of us because we've elected you to speak for us. And I thought you did an excellent job in joining together and writing a letter unanimously in trying to get rid of a very dirty, dirty piece to our wonderful gateway, which is the second part of what I'd like to discuss. I've heard an awful lot about the gateway and how incredibly important it is to create the success of a city. And a lot of very important figures had spoken about this. And signs were one, which is very poor right now, and John's been working on that. I applaud him for that. Lighting is another. Very poor lighting down Market Street. And the appearance happens to be probably the single most important thing besides the signs. And our appearance right now is very poor. There really isn't any vegetation, anything nice along the median strip on the way in. And we all know that, especially from the study that has been done by students at the University of New Hampshire, that it is a very unsightly scene on the left-hand side on the way into Portsmouth. And not only that, you really can't see the beauty of Portsmouth until you get past those two piles. So for a first appearance, it really is a major problem, almost like a pimple on a beautiful face, so to speak. And I think we should all keep very active in trying to make sure that Market Street remain very, very beautiful on the way into our city. As much as PDA may not want to consider themselves a part of that gateway, they are. And they need to respect your words on how you want it handled, regardless of the positions of the authority there. And I think you have a lot more power than we really have taken to yet. So let's keep an eye on Market Street. I know they've got a guy out there cleaning up all the time. It's sad that we actually have to have someone pick up all the time. I don't think there should be anything on the streets on the way in as it is. But let's keep an eye on that, and I'd like to work with you in the future on that. And thank you again for your efforts last year.
Thank you. Our third speaker this evening is Catherine Dipentima, speaking about the breakaway gate at Portsmouth Boulevard Dunlin Way.
Thank you, councilors, Mr. Mayor, city employees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for a moment this evening. My name's Catherine Dipentima. I'm at 16 Dunlin Way in Portsmouth, and I am part of the Osprey Landing Homeowners Association. I've been working with the residents on Dunlin Way and actually got a petition signed, which we brought to the city council this fall, asking for the establishment of a separation of commercial traffic from residential traffic at the point where Dunlin Way meets Portsmouth Boulevard. As I said, we did bring the petition. It was signed by all of the residents on Dunlin Way. And I was in touch with Brura Corporation, who own the property over on Portsmouth Boulevard. They agreed to pay half of the cost, reasonable cost, for a breakaway gate. The residents agreed to pay the other half. I think everybody involved realized that there's considerable traffic, that there is a real safety issue. You have residential neighborhood now abutting, a very busy commercial area with a hotel being erected there. Since then, since the time that we brought the petition to the city council, we've received a memo from David Holden to Mr. Bohanko saying that there were no promises to make any cul-de-sac or to terminate any city streets, and there were no plans to do anything like that. The reason I'm here this evening is I want to ask you to please reconsider supporting some means of separation, as you said, from the residential area. We have kids in the street, we have older people, we have bikes, we have pets. And right next to it now, we do have this very busy residential area. So I would ask that you reconsider and support the erection of some means of separation. If not a cul-de-sac, then a breakaway gate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our fourth speaker this evening, on the same subject of the breakaway gate, is Rich Dipentima.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. My name is Rich Dipentima, and I'm also a resident of 16 Dunlin Way, Portsmouth. And I just wanted to echo the comments. Again, I represent as well the homeowners association on Osprey Landing homeowners. And I wanted to reiterate the issue in terms of the growth that's happening on Portsmouth Boulevard, which we don't oppose. When we bought the homes on Dunlin Way, we realized that that was zoned, either, you know, commercial and was zoned for research and office space. So that's not an issue. The concern we have now is with a hotel going in, a fairly large hotel is being built as we speak. And subsequently to that, there will be other development, which is going to be right next door to this very nice residential development. And we are really concerned about the safety issues and the traffic that's going to flow through that residential development as a result of that growth. So we wish that you would at least consider, we have the approval and the willingness of the property owners and the developers on Portsmouth Boulevard to cooperate and assist in paying for that. And the homeowners have agreed that we would pay for half of that. I would also like to have the Traffic Committee maybe consider, prior to the opening of a hotel, start to do a traffic survey at the junction of Dunlin Way and Portsmouth Boulevard to monitor the traffic prior to the building of the hotel. And then do another traffic survey subsequent to the building of the hotel to get a reading in terms of what volume of traffic you're going to be seeing in that community and assess the safety considerations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our fifth speaker this evening, speaking about the clearing of land related to Portsmouth Toyota, is Elaine Langer.
Hi, I'm Elaine Langer. I live at 48 Maudrey Street, and I'm here on behalf of my neighborhood. I do have a letter petitioning for you to look into what Portsmouth Toyota has done. Our once peaceful and quiet neighborhood has turned into a large noise. Noise pollution has increased tremendously, and light pollution has increased tremendously. And we've lost all of our wildlife because what they have done down there, they have cleared all of the natural resources. And we're not receiving notification of any permits because of the way their butter laws are right now. Because we are 400 feet, not 200 feet, we're not receiving notification. I feel we should receive notification because we are being affected by what they do down there. Now, when I go out in my backyard, I see the Route 1 bypass rather than woods. And I just want to make sure that they no longer use our street as a throughway to access their property. They have done so twice now to bring heavy machinery in there to clear, which is not supposed to be done. And who should I give this to?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe that we'll be discussing this a little later in this evening's meeting, although maybe we could briefly mention it right now.
Yes, Your Honor, the City of Portsmouth, and I would defer to the city attorney relative to action that's being taken on the Portsmouth Toyota issue. It might be useful to just have him mention that.
Sure. Honor, about January 13th, my office was advised by the city's environmental planner, Peter Brits, that the clearcutting, which has occurred in the woodlands around Portsmouth Toyota, has illegally infringed in two locations into the wetlands buffer, the inland wetlands protection buffer created by the city council. So I wrote a letter to Mr. Boyle, James Boyle, who's the trustee of the 150 Greenleaf Avenue Realty Trust, which I guess is more or less the alter ego for Portsmouth Toyota, and advised him that we would be bringing a lawsuit against him to seek a redress for that wetlands violation and ask him who would be representing him in the lawsuit to help facilitate getting the case going. He's advised me that Attorney Pelech will be representing him. I received a call from Attorney Pelech, who asked if we would show him the violations before we bring the lawsuit. Appointment's being made at this time for that to happen. Peter Brits and I will demonstrate to Mr. Pelech where the violations are, and then we will bring the lawsuit. We understand that Portsmouth Toyota has been a difficult neighbor for the people that live in that vicinity. We recall the lighting problem that they had, the lights at night. We have had issues with them concerning where the vehicles get parked. We had this issue now with the clearcutting and the invasion of the wetlands buffer. It's pretty clear that Portsmouth Toyota is rising high on the list of the problem corporate neighbors in the city, and we will deal with it.
Very good. Figured that the timing of that would seem an appropriate time. And I see our next speaker is Mr. Rodney Rodriguez. That may have stolen some thunder, but perhaps you won't be so upset about that, speaking on the same issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Rodney Rodriguez, 94 Lower Street. I'm here with my wife, Lisa. A little bit of thunder, no, thank you, Attorney Sullivan, for the information. This has been some concern for us, living at 94 Lower Street. We're not a direct abutter, but I'm about 150 feet away from what's going on. And when my son wakes me up in the morning crying because his little fort that he takes his dogs walking through the woods is gone, I had concerns at 7:30 in the morning to see 20, 30 trees an hour being cut down. And I believe it might have been my phone call, which I'm glad I made, to the city to go down and see what was going on because I didn't receive a notification of clearing. And then, because I wasn't sure what was going on, I went ahead and contacted- And then, because I wasn't sure what was going on, I went ahead and contacted the state and realized that without a variance, a land use change variance granted from Portsmouth to Toyota, that it was illegal for them to cut anywhere between 150 feet of wetlands or a state highway. And I thought that would stop it, but it didn't. The next thing I saw was easily 250 trees cut down and the next day loaders picking it up and it was gone. Since then, the visual buffer, the noise buffer, and the quality of life has changed somewhat on the end of that street, on the end of Lois, on the end of Marjory, on the end of Sylvester. When I say five, six, seven, eight deer, two or three times a week in the back of my yard eating the apples off my tree was occurring, it was, now it's not. And I just wanted to voice my concern in regards to, I appreciate what the city council does in trying to help the residents, but is there anything else that can be done to notify residents of what business is doing in the area or surrounding area, those who are living in that area? I'm not sure where, I'm a little ignorant to what the rules are, what they aren't. So I'd just like to voice my concern as a resident, maybe a little more notification to those living around businesses, what they're going to do and what they're not going to do. And I appreciate your comment, Mr. Sullivan, about what's happening with Toyota and the like.
Your Honor, may I say one thing? In connection with your last comment, there apparently was some rumor being spread around that Portsmouth Toyota had municipal approvals to expand the parking area for their automobiles. I will tell you that is not true. There is no application filed, there is no permit given, and frankly, this wetland invasion, the buffer invasion that's now occurred is going to slow down any approval process which Portsmouth Toyota would have to go through in order to expand their parking area.
I appreciate that. Not to go, Mr. Mayor, not to go over the three minutes, I'll try to be real brief on that, but I was here at other meetings in regards to when they were planning on just parking on the grass. Let me just clear a little the parking lot so we can park another 30, 40 cars. And I was like, well, I'd rather not. I don't want any leaking into the groundwater, that stream, so on and so forth. And I didn't receive any other variances in regards to that. And the next thing I know is they were in there clearing underbrush. And I'm like, well, this was a year ago. What are you clearing underbrush for? And so on and so, you know, it's just, it just seems like it's a jousting thing with them. You know, they do one thing, let me see how I can circumvent something else. How can I tick them off or how can I get them had or how can I do whatever I have to without thinking of the neighbors? And I don't want to be a business, I'm a small businessman myself, but I know that if I was to do something like that, I'm going to lose business versus being a friendly businessman in the area. So, and I'd just like to voice my concern in regards to that and wish we had a little more information. Maybe, again, maybe I'm a little ignorant to what happens, but I appreciate all that you do and it just if we can keep more information coming to us.
Your Honor, again, Mr. Rodriguez, I have to say that it's really impossible for the city to notify everybody in the city who might be interested. It's just the volume of notices and the judgment calls are impossible. However, I would invite you to call either myself or call the planning director, David Holden, anytime for an update as to what's going on with Portsmouth Toyota and we will provide you with all the information we have anytime you make the call.
Great. I'll do that prior to me waking up one morning and going, oh, maybe I'll just call to see if there's anything I can do to help versus a 911 because that's how I felt at that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I apologize, I said eight, we have seven speakers actually, and I'll apologize because I'm having trouble reading the last name of our seventh and last person, also speaking on the same topic. Carmen, and I apologize, I won't even, I won't even guess, I'll let you, I'll let you say it correctly.
Good evening, my name is Carmen. I live in 1 Marjory Street. I don't know if I can. Let's see, I'm here for the same Toyota issue and pretty much, I just want to.
Oh, don't worry about it. We don't bite and really appreciate you coming out, so don't, take your time.
Let's see, I'm concerned about the safety of our children because right now this is a dead end street. If they're going to let it have open traffic, we just don't want to have like, how do you say, like a test road for these people, you know? It was supposed to be a protected lane and that is not happening. You know, obviously the value of our houses is going to be reduced because if, you know, it was, it was a very peaceful and quiet neighborhood and now if they're going to have that open, it's just so much noise, so much pollution over there, you know, it's, that's what I want to say. I just want you to think about the residents of Portsmouth, you know, try to live in a peaceful and quiet place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe those are all public comments for the evening and at this point, we would move to the public hearing for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may at this time, make a motion to suspend the rules to deliberate on the approval of the contract extension for the Association of Portsmouth Teachers indicated under Roman numeral 12A, second one.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good. Okay, let me move ahead then I apologize.
That was the move to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the contract extension for the Association of Portsmouth Teachers.
Second.
Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes nine, nothing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I was going to also move to suspend the rules with respect to Deputy Police Chief Linda Sessa, although I don't see anybody here who might be governed by that, so I feel, I feel that I will not, but if we see anybody walk in, I may jump in. So I will not move, I will not move.
What's that?
We'll do it anyway, all right. I'll move to suspend the rules to consider the contract of Deputy Police Chief Linda Sessa because Councilor Grasso told me to.
How can you argue with that? All those in favors, suspending the rules.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilor Whitehouse.
I'll move to approve the contract of Deputy Chief Linda Sessa.
Second.
Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That also passes nine, nothing. And I believe with that, now we will move into the public hearing. The public hearing this evening deals with ordinance amending Chapter One, Article Two, by the addition of Section One Point Two, political contributions to city council candidates. Perhaps city manager, if you want to give any background leading into the public hearing.
Your Honor, what I would do is I would defer to the city attorney who at the direction of the city council drafted this ordinance with amendments.
If adopted by the city council, what this ordinance would do is create an election law in the city under which council candidates who receive campaign contributions, and contributions is broadly defined to include both money and also non-cash contributions, in excess of $100, would be required shortly after the election, shortly before the election, I'm sorry, to list those contributions in a public form and then shortly after the election to supplement that form with any contributions received from the date of filing the first form to the second form. Essentially, council candidates who did not comply with this provision would not be sworn into office. It contains, the ordinance is really a public notification kind of ordinance. It is not intended to contain any criminal penalties or any of that nature. It does not regulate in any way the amount of money which candidates can receive. It just says that if they receive more than $100 in total, that all contributions have to be reported. Now, this ordinance has been brought forward at the council's request, has some amendments in it at the council's request, but I understand that all the issues such as the dollar limits, the $100, may not be resolved to the council's satisfaction yet. And it would be entirely appropriate, after the public hearing, at second reading, for members of the council who feel that the ordinance can be improved, to make those improvements by way of amendment.
Very good. And with that, we'll open this up for the public hearing. There's no strict time limit to these, but please keep it to the subject at hand. And with that, we'll open it up to a first time around. And if you could give your name and address as well when you, when you come up.
Mayor Marshawn, city council. My name is James Horgan. I live at 35 Elwin Avenue. I've tried to keep abreast of political affairs in the city and I've tried to follow the development of this particular ordinance, but even at this point, I'm still unclear as to what's prompting it, which leads me to sort of one general observation and then I have a specific suggestion I'd like to offer about the ordinance we have in front of us. It strikes me that you're all being asked to make a trade-off here with your vote. On the one hand, I suppose you could say it's obvious that we should have some kind of financial reporting system for city council races. And being a retired professor of accounting, I certainly can't oppose that motivation. On the other hand, the current process for running for city council is really quite simple. Pay the fee or get a few signatures and you run. It's open to any citizen in the city. And I worry that now that we venture into some kind of financial reporting system, we might be making it process complicated enough that we may be diminishing that possibility for, you know, some citizens. And that does worry me. I don't think it's quite as clear-cut as you all may seem, partly because you have to keep in mind, I think, for those of us who aren't in on the process here, it's, again, it's unclear why suddenly there's a demand for a financial reporting system. I assume there are good reasons for that and having said that, I'd like to offer one specific suggestion about the ordinance that you have in front of you. I think you should consider a threshold figure for the reporting of names of contributors. At the federal level, I believe that's $200. I don't know if there's such a threshold at the state level. I think there is, but in any event, at the city level, the city politics, city council elections are up close and personal. I mean, the people running are our friends and neighbors, we know all of you. And it seems to me that without some kind of a threshold, you're going to be inhibiting certain small donors from donating. Because think about it, they, if they donate to just a few of you or one of you, they're now running the risk of disappointing or even annoying other members who are elected. And yet, they're going to be coming to you in the two years ahead for, on various issues. I think it's a serious problem. I really think you should consider a threshold over which then the specific names of contributors should be reported. I don't know what the number is, $25, $50, $10, I really don't know. But, but the ordinance is, it's written now, I think it's going to discourage small donors. And that's going to be a consequence I know that all of you would never have intended, but I think it could well happen. But in the end, I'd say, I think I lean towards favoring this ordinance, but I do think there's some, there is that unresolved general question of do we want to complicate the city campaigns? And I really do believe strongly there should be a threshold on the contributions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Still open for a first time around.
Hello, Mayor, city councilors, honorable mayor, I should say. Once again, thanks a lot on your fine, I want to congratulate you all again on your fine victories. My name's Steve Durgan. I live at 565 Sagamore Ave. I didn't, I didn't read this before hearing the city attorney read it to us, but in general, I think that's a good, it's a good step in the right direction. I think the thing that's more important though is to make sure that local, local elections are by, for, and of the people of our community. So as a general commentary on this subject matter, because actually, I think Harold was good enough to tell me this was going to be the agenda tonight, I just figured I'd make a general commentary on it. I think today, the primary objective of political parties is to advance the agendas of government bureaucracy's big business and special interest. Despite the fact census data appears to indicate that the majority of Americans are not employed by or represented by one of these groups, very little, if any, meaningful federal regulation, I know this sounds kind of wordy, but it's short and I get to the point quick, very little meaningful federal regulation helps the average American ever seize the light of day in Congress. On rare occasions, when it does, it almost always is immediately squashed by special interest or the opposing party. This is why party politics is bad and that's why we shouldn't have it here. There are however many able and well-intentioned individuals serving in all levels of government, which is an example of you guys here tonight. Municipal government is the closest to the people and is the most important of the four levels in government. As our new mayor has mentioned, a well-run government can be a tremendous force for good and serve as an example to other communities, which is a good thing and I couldn't agree with more. To achieve this objective, I believe we should work to keep our city hall a forum of original thought and original policy formation designed by and for the citizens of this community. We need election rules that do not infringe on the ability of people of this community to participate or to donate to the candidates of their choice. However, I believe anyone who serves as an elected official, official in our city should achieve the post solely on the message they bring and by the will and resources of the people of this community. In fact, municipal government in its current form is intended to be non-partisan, it's intended to be, you know, by and for the local people and the original organic thing coming up, coming from the ground up rather than top-down. To sum up, for these reasons, I believe the city council should consider prohibiting all direct or indirect monetary donations from political parties to any candidates in our city elections. And I just think this will be a good thing for our city. So that's just something I wanted to mention to you all to consider, maybe having a, just preventing political donations, either directly or indirectly, you know, in the forms of advertisement or whatever, to anyone running for local elections. I think that would help make this a better town and encourage people to get more involved. So that's all I have, what I have to say and good to see you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, first time around? Seeing none, we'll, we'll do a second time around and a third time around. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at that. And just for those at home as well as those that were active and responsible and we appreciate you coming out tonight, we are going to be discussing this a little bit later in this agenda as well. So now we move to approval of grants and donations. We have two such items under the agenda. The first one is acceptance of a FEMA grant to the Portsmouth Police Department and perhaps the city manager would like to make a brief comment about that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Basically, this is a $25,000 grant that will be used to furnish and equip a redundant dispatch center. When the city received its, its grant to replace its dispatch center at the police department, the equipment, the radio equipment and the like was saved and we looked for a redundant area to have another dispatch center in the event that the dispatch center here is disabled. We are utilizing a room at the Public Works facility and this would help to finalize the construction and the operation of that redundant system at no cost to the, to the taxpayers.
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll take a motion.
Your Honor, I'll move that we accept a donation to, move to approve and accept, rather, the grant to the Portsmouth Police Department as listed.
Do I have a second on that? Okay, any discussion? Councilor Panalakos.
Yes, I just have a question. Do, do we get the grant before we spend the money or do they send it to us when they get ready to send it to us?
We would, it's my understanding, and I know that the finance director is here, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, but I believe it would be a reimbursable grant.
I, I understand that, but what I'm trying to ask, the question is, do we spend taxpayers' money? money and then wait for this money to come in?
We would do this, it's typical with any, if I might, Your Honor. Counselor, with any grant that we receive, federal or state, what we would do is we'd set up what would be known as a grants receivable on our books, so that probably the timing would be once we submit the actual paperwork, the timing might be 60 to 90 days, depending on the granting agency. By virtue of approving this, and we enter into a contract with the federal government and with the state, they are bound to send us this money unless we do something, unless we say we're going to spend $25,000 on the redundant system and then end up spending $25,000 on a skating rink or something. I think what we have to do is prove to them that we've spent the money as we asked for within the grant, and probably a turnaround time of 60 to 90 days, and we basically set up a grant receivable in our accounting system.
Thank you.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just two questions, quick questions. Do we have room at the Public Works Building?
If you recall, and I might, Your Honor, respond, Counselor Whitehouse, there is a, remember when we expanded, oh, actually, did the Public Works Facility? We had always intended to put another dispatch, the redundant dispatch center there, and so what we did is we added, instead of stopping and having the high ceiling, we went across and we put in a room adjacent to the engineering area, and there's an open area, and we created a room where we can have a dispatch center.
So there hasn't been used at all since then?
No, what we've utilized it for, and Steve has, and his staff has utilized it for storage, and we are cleaning that out, I suspect.
Just one more question, Your Honor, Mayor. Our cell tower out there, will that have any bearing on the digital-type communications we have with our phones? It's something I've never, you know, I've heard, I've heard stories about a cell tower in proximity of a communication center causes some problems. Feedback or something?
No, Counselor, that would not be the case, and we have had people that have installed this equipment to check that, and we certainly wouldn't do that. It's been reviewed. Thank you for the information.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Smith?
For Mr. Bahanko. In looking at this, I see on the back that there was a copy of a check for $25,000. What is that for? Is that the actual grant money, or that was put into a holding account?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I would have to check with the finance director. Judy, do you want to, do you have an answer to that? Come on forward, please. I don't know if you're familiar with the check. It's from the state of New Hampshire for $25,000 dated 11/18.
Yes, I may have not seen that particular check. Many of the grants are reimbursable, as the city manager had explained, and this one was initiated by the police department, so we would not deposit that check until such time that the city council approved it.
All the paperwork would be in, and we would probably, I'm sure it's been deposited, Judy.
Yeah, according to this, if I may continue, Mr. Mayor, it shows that it was deposited, the police department deposit slip dated on 11/29/2025.
We cannot expend any of those funds.
No, I understand that, but I'm wondering if that may answer Counselor Panalakis's question, that the funds seem to already be here within the city. And if so, is this what that check was for?
Yes.
It is.
The reason that I raised this question is that I read in the paper that a certain entity within our city was running in the red because it had not received Homeland Security money, and I wanted to make sure that these grants coming out of FEMA was not the same as the ones coming out of Homeland Security that might put us in the position that we wouldn't have, that we would be spending taxpayers' money in place of money that was supposed to be coming in.
Right, but I'm not sure where that, what agency that was.
Not in the city, one of the entities in the city.
Oh, I got you, I got you, okay. Again, Your Honor, if I might, I think we're all set, Judy. Thank you, Counselor Smith. I just want to reiterate that typically, there are different ways that the federal government handles the grants, either it's through letter of credit, when it's a large grant, let us assume, like when we did Top Off, they would provide us with what would be known as a letter of credit, and that one was a letter of credit of over $1 million, and we would draw down from that letter of credit as needed and then would supply the documentation. Or we would submit applications, and in some instances, you need to expend the money, and then we provide the paperwork, and then we get reimbursement. And it appears in this particular instance that the, and I can't answer specifically for the police to not hear, but I would assume what happened is the application was made, the money is available, and then we're going to have a reporting requirement after the fact, once we've expended the money, to assure that the money has been expended appropriately. And that's why we have the Single Audit Act, and we go through and we audit all our federal grants.
Thank you.
Very good. Any, just to close that loop, any follow-up from either Counselor Panalakis or Counselor Smith? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move the question. All those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, second and final item under acceptance of grants and donations, this one deals with the acceptance of a donation to the new library building fund for the naming of the children's room, and again, I'll move this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mary Ann List, the library director is here, and I'd ask her to come down and maybe just give a brief overview relative to this donation, as well as the list of naming opportunities attached to the documentation.
As you know, we have developed a list of naming opportunities for the new library for people who would like to make sizable contributions, especially if they have a particular interest in some, one thing or another that the library does. This particular donation comes from a family that would like to remain anonymous at this time. Their interest is in the children's library, and they have offered us this money for furnishings and equipment in the children's room of the new library.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'll accept the motion in this regard.
I move that we accept the $90,000.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting it?
Aye.
All those opposed? There you go, Mary Ann. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, excuse me, we'll move on to consideration of resolutions and ordinances, having a few this evening. The first one deals with, the first reading of a resolution authorizing a bond issue of up to $600,000 for improvements to city roadways and Newcastle Avenue seawall. That's roadway improvements from Newcastle Avenue to Marcy Street. Perhaps your city manager wants to comment on this.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Portsmouth has been working with the New Hampshire DOT since 2000 to bring forward this project. The city has been managing this project for the New Hampshire DOT, and in July of 2001, hired the engineering firm of Bay, Spofford, and Thorne Dyke to complete the design work. Primary goals of the project include restoring the structural integrity of the seawall, roadway and sidewalk, improving bicycle and pedestrian safety, and enhancing the aesthetic and scenic qualities of the corridor. The project includes the reconstruction of approximately one-half mile of Newcastle Avenue between Marcy Street and the Bridge Street, excuse me, the bridge located just east of Pleasant Point Drive, as well as the reconstruction of Marcy Street for a distance of approximately 250 feet north of its intersection with Newcastle Avenue. In addition, approximately 1,100 feet of seawall will be replaced along with new sidewalks and granite curbing. This project has been delayed due to the proximity of the roadway and seawall to the wetlands area, requiring a lengthy environmental process to obtain the necessary permits. In addition, archaeological protocols had to be detailed to handle excavations within the work area to document any historical artifacts that may be uncovered. Additional delay was encountered while funding options were investigated to underground the overhead utilities within the project area. At this time, the final design of the improvements is complete, and the project is being prepared for bidding with construction to start in April of 2006. The total project cost will be $2.5 million. The bonding request for first reading this evening you have before you is for $600,000, and this is the city's share of the projected construction cost of the improvements. The New Hampshire DOT will be contributing approximately $1.9 million of federal funds as their share of the construction, and I ask for your approval for first reading, Your Honor, and then we can establish a public hearing as well.
Very good. Do I have a motion in that regard? Counselor Johnson?
Your Honor, I move that we pass the first reading and hold a public hearing and adoption of this bonding resolution at the February 13 city council meeting.
Second.
Any question or discussion, Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, one question to the city manager, please.
May I? Absolutely.
Thank you. John, we'll go to a public hearing on February 13, and then probably the third and final reading will be a March meeting.
May I? Because the bonding resolutions only have two readings.
Okay. So, what I'm getting at is this has been a long time coming. A lot of people have been concerned about this, so when do we expect to go out to bid on this project?
Early April of 2006.
All right.
In fact, we've got the documents prepared. We're ready to go. It'll probably, Steve, are we almost out to bid right now? We probably shouldn't be until we have approvals, but that's all right. All right. In theory. In theory.
In theory.
We don't award them until we have approvals.
Currently, the project has just gone out to bid, mainly because there is a component of this project that if we are to get going this year, we have to do environmental work of moving swamp grass, seagrass in April. So the process has been started, but as with any process, without this body's approval, no contracts would be signed, no project would take place.
Thank you. Very good. Assistant Mayor?
Just to note, I knew what the city manager meant, but to point out, in his report where he indicates additional delay was encountered, and certainly was encountered, while funding options were investigated to see whether or not the overhead utilities could be placed underground, I think the point is that they are not as part of this project to be placed underground. Is that correct?
That is correct, Assistant Mayor.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Reynolds?
Question, I suppose, for the city manager, Director of Public Works, and I ask this question in all seriousness. Given that nearly $2 million of public money is going to be expended, it's a very significant project, and it's going to be, you know, hopefully what we build is going to stand the city of Portsmouth for the next however many, 50, 100 years. Are we, is the level of the seawall, is the sea level that we are building for, are we taking into account any forecast rise in sea level over the next century?
I'd have to defer to the Public Works Director. You can answer from there.
I know you would smile, but I, you know, I'm being serious. You know that this is an area that I work a little bit professionally in, and, you know, models forecast anywhere from, you know, six inches to two feet of sea level rise.
We hope the eelgrass will hold back any water.
So the answer is, I mean, are we building for the same sea level now, or are we building for a rise, any increase, or?
I don't believe we're building for any substantial increase.
In the state, right?
Thank you.
Your Honor. Okay, Counselor Whitehouse?
For informational item, I've lived within sight of that wall all my life, and I've never, never seen extremely high tide where the wind conditions and the moon conditions exceed flow over that wall. I've never seen it go over the wall onto the road. It's come close, but never exceeded over.
Okay, well, I just, they'd never seen the levees breach in New Orleans either before, a few months ago, so.
We're on the coast.
Make that point.
Very good. Counselor Smith?
I just want to go on record saying that as much as I agree with this broad, what's going to happen out there, I know it's something that is needed out there. I'm disappointed. I understand the cost is involved, but I'm disappointed that we're losing the opportunity to get those utilities underground. I know it has stopped the process. I'm not trying to stop the process. I just want to go on record that we, I personally think we're losing a big opportunity if we have to do all this major work out there and a lot of construction out there, that we're losing the opportunity to really get the utilities underground and clean up an eyesore, because this is another part of the gateway into the city as you're coming in from Newcastle or people traveling out to Newcastle. And anything we can do to approve the aesthetics out there, I think we should be trying to do. Again, I'm not trying to stop the process. I just want to go on record as saying that, and if there's any way in doing the budget process and putting this out to bid that that could still be at least left on the table to be looked at, I'd appreciate that.
Your Honor, if I might, I appreciate what Counselor Smith has said, but there's been a valiant effort by the city staff here. I mean, we brought this all the way to appeal to the FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration. The DOT felt, for a number of reasons, they denied our request to include this cost into the project, and I can understand their position, but I disagreed with it. In addition, over a period of a year, we worked with property owners, and we worked with the city council to try to come up with a 50-50 funding plan, and we had a lot of legal work and a lot of staff time put into this, a lot of public meetings with neighborhoods, and we almost got there where we were going to do a 50-50 split. At the last minute, the neighborhood felt uncomfortable with it and chose not to do it, and we were going to spread it over a period of years. We cannot wait any longer for this project to proceed. I think we did everything in our power to try to make it happen. If the city wants to appropriate the substantial sums of money that would be required, we can do it, but at this point, we've tried every avenue, and I know, I understand your frustration. The staff feels the frustration probably more than you do, because we strived hard to try to get the funding for this, so, but we need to move forward on this project, and it is noted. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nothing? The second resolution or ordinance deals with the issue that was part of the public hearing this evening. This is the second reading of ordinance amending chapter one, article two, by the addition of section 1.2, "Political Contributions to City Council Candidates." It was discussed a bit earlier in the meeting, but either the city manager or city attorney, any comments that you wanted to preface the council discussion with?
I actually would, Your Honor. I'd like to make one thing.
Sure.
This ordinance, if adopted, isn't going to have a practical effect for nearly two years. Therefore, if the councilors wish to make changes, rather than try to make them in haste tonight under the pressure of television cameras and the lights, I would simply ask that if the councilors wish this ordinance to be amended, that I simply be given instructions tonight to bring those amendments in at the next council meeting, and that the ordinance, that second reading be continued to the next council meeting for that purpose.
Okay, with that in mind, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
So moved for what?
Well, that's a good, that's a good point.
Well, I'm moving that the recommendation made by Attorney Sullivan be moved as a motion.
I would understand that to mean that the ordinance passed second reading.
I think we have a lot of amendments that we'd like to at least consider tonight.
Well, let me start with, if I understood the original motion, basically, at least you begin the process this evening as currently written, as currently proposed.
I think the recommendation was to table it or to extend it to the next meeting so that we could bring it up with a more reasonable start for what looks like a huge Band-Aid of amendments coming up on an issue that is not very well addressed.
Mr. Mayor?
I want to make sure I understand that. So, let me see first, to get something on the table here. Do I have a second to that, and we can begin some discussion?
I would like to table this issue to further, until we have time to sit down and really talk this over. We've only included the council in this. There is also a police commission, a fire commission, and a school board that are run in the state, in the city. So I think that we need to take into consideration everything we want to do and do it right if we're going to put an ordinance out. And if there's three or four amendments alone tonight, there might be a couple more tomorrow. And so I think if we table it until after the budget is over, and so we can concentrate on it, that we would be in better, making a better ordinance, a better... on it, that we would be in better, making a better ordinance, a better, know what we're doing.
Okay, so if I understand that, well, first, let me see if there's a second to that. Basically, the motion would be to table this until?
After the budget.
After the budget, so presumably, I don't know if we need to set a date specific right now, but sometime in July or later.
Yeah, because we don't, there's no election for almost two years. So we've got plenty of time to get these, this ordinance on the books and the way we want it and do it the right way.
Okay, do I have?
Your Honor, I'll second the table.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion on that?
Discussion on the tabling motion, Your Honor? May I? Yeah. I will be voting against the tabling ordinance, a motion, because I've made up my mind and I've got many reasons why I will be, if it's, if it's, a motion is made to pass its original presentation, I will be voting against it. And that's why I would like to handle this right now and get it settled once and for all. But for a tabling motion at this time, I think we're just delaying what a lot of people are thinking about in reference to this ordinance. So I'll be voting against the tabling on.
Thank you. And yet, yes, Counselor Johnson.
If we were to vote on this tonight as presented, I would vote against it also. And I think in tabling this, we have a chance to look at amendments that we might want to make, and maybe we would discuss whether we want, need this ordinance at all. And I think that's something that maybe time will help us decide. So that's why I voted, seconded the tabling motion.
Very good. Thank you. And Counselor Reynolds, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suppose, I mean, Counselor Pentalakis is certainly correct in pointing out that there aren't any more citywide elections coming up for nearly two years. So we certainly do have plenty of time to discuss this issue and develop an ordinance that, yeah, for example, covers all citywide offices as well as takes into account the various concerns that people might have with the current ordinance as proposed. I actually came here this evening and corresponded with some of you today by email, and so you know that I was prepared to offer an amendment tonight. So I was planning to heed the city attorney's request or advice to simply move that we instruct him to prepare an amendment. I was going to propose an amendment this evening, as it just so happens, along the lines of what Mr. Horrigan addressed earlier, which was to include a threshold amount below which, a threshold amount to which the disclosure requirement would apply. I am, and I get the sense that many people on the council are fully supportive of the intent of the ordinance, and we discussed it already once, that we address the issue of campaign contributions and in doing so, address the concern that large campaign contributions could have an undue influence on a candidate or a counselor. So, but I suppose the motion to table, I suppose I would, I would support it, given the fact that we have a long time to craft one and, you know, perhaps get more conversation going in the community, more input from more members of the community, and do it right. So I'll, I'll support the tabling motion.
Okay. Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. My thought is respectfully to Counselor Whitehouse, where he wants to handle it tonight and get it done with, I kind of would like to, too, in a perfect world, and frankly, I didn't have much problem with it as it was written. But clearly, if three or more councilors, even Counselor Whitehouse indicates that they, you know, didn't like it as they see it and perhaps would, or would perhaps want to amend it, there's obviously no unanimity of opinion here. It'd be a waste of time to haggle over words right now. And so I certainly support the motion and will vote for it.
Counselor Smith.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, too, if this was coming before us tonight in this present form, I would have been voting against it. My question on it, though, is in the tabling motion, does that bring it back to us in a work session first, or does it have to come back as we just basically tell you our thoughts and opinions as what's coming along?
As the motion has currently been made, if it were to pass, the effect would be to postpone second reading indefinitely. The ordinance would come back before the city council, when the city council voted to bring it back, and establish a date for the continued second reading. The key element is that the public needs to be aware of when you were going to consider this motion. So typically, you would vote at one meeting, that it would come back at the next meeting, for example, so that public notice can occur.
Well, is there a way to get it to a work session?
Yes.
With us before we'd have that?
I agree with that.
And if I understand correctly, and it may well be that that's the route that we're heading down based on the variety of views here, we would not need to take it off the table by any means, have a work session on it. We could have a work session in advance of any untabling, if you will.
Correct.
Thank you. That answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, and let's see, Counselor Dwyer.
I think that's a good idea. I just wouldn't want us to wait. I know we don't have elections for two years, but the whole idea behind getting something like this on the books is not only for the little period right before elections, because it represents the, a longer period than that. So I wouldn't want us to postpone it since we've, we've had discussion, we have ideas. I do think a work session's a great idea, but I don't think we should postpone it. I think we should just move it right along.
Okay, Counselor Whitehouse.
Yes, we should be discussing just the tabling motion alone, but since we've gone off the track a little bit, I'd like to just briefly tell you my reasons for not supporting it as written. First of all, I know what's going on in Dover. I've clipped and read and know the news releases and the suits and the problems in Dover. And I just think that making something so stringent for new candidates, when they file, they're going to read this ordinance and they're not going to be happy with this. And, and you know, to put restrictions on candidates filing for city council is not a way to go. Maybe a simple policy whereby they come in, they pay their $5 filing fee, and then they sign a policy which states that they will try to stay within a certain dollar figure for campaign expenditures. That's all that's necessary, a simple resolution in the clerk's office. I go back to 1987 when candidates filed for city council, and we had 23 to 26 candidates at that time. Over the years, it's dwindled down, and we've only had this time, 16 and 13 actually ran for election. So I say this is another avenue of big government stepping in and, and, you know, causing a little bit of heartburn for candidates who are thinking to run for a city council. And to put another restriction like this on good people out there who would come forward, I don't think it's necessary. I really don't. I see what's happening, as I said before, in Dover and also in Rochester, and I don't think we need this. So that's why if we was going to vote on this in this present form, I would never support it. But if you're going to set a motion to table this and for a time certain, for it to come back as a work session, then I would support it. But I'd want a time certain.
Counselor Pentalakis.
Yes, I am, I'm in agreement for a work session and I'm in agreement for a time certain. And I base the things that we vote on and things that we need to have done within the city on the number of people that show up in that audience to tell me that it needs to be done. We had one gentleman stand up here tonight and talk about this campaign. And he actually talked against it because he said, if I gave to you and didn't give to her, it would be hard feelings. I think we need to work on this. If it's something that the public thinks we need, they'll have a second chance to come out when it's not snowing and yet have it done. But I do believe it is, no one can influence the council of big projects, because those big projects don't come before this council. They come before a planning board. I don't know what the reasoning was or why we decided we were going to have this thing. But I do believe if we're going to do it, let's do it right and not shoot from the hip and put things on the books that people just cannot abide by.
I have the gavel. Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Our initial foray into passing the gavel. Two quick comments. One is, I agree with Counselor Dwyer in that I think when we look at political contributions and at the broader level, even political campaigns, they do not only occur in a window of a couple of months before the election. In a sense, depending how you define it, in this case, a two-year term, the two-year election cycle has already begun. And in theory, in terms of contributions, if you were to wait six months to implement any kind of campaign finance requirements in terms of reporting, you create a six-month window, in the example I just gave, where there is nothing on the books and as much could be raised as you wanted and would not, in all likelihood, be required to be accountable. So you really are in the midst of a cycle. When people run for president, they're really talking about a four-year cycle of campaigning, not just serving if you're already in office, and it's certainly the same at the local level. So on one level, I think that, while I don't think we should rush something if people aren't prepared to do it, and that's why we're having this discussion, that I also think that it's not something that is as relaxed a timetable as it might seem at first, because we are in the midst of a cycle, at least the way I define it. The second thing is, I'm actually going to vote against it, tabling it, in part because of that, and also in part because, in my, just my own opinion, I think that with relatively small amendments, and I think Mr. Horrigan earlier tonight touched on something, that upon further reflection, I would agree. Originally, I did not see a need to have any kind of threshold under which you wouldn't have to report it. After listening to a few folks talk about, including Mr. Horrigan and actually several people, I understand, I think there are good reasons why there should be some, in my opinion, some kind of threshold. I understand why people that want to give 25 bucks might feel like they don't want to give it if it's going to be reported for reasons that we've talked about tonight and other nights. So for me, that would be, that sort of amendment would be the only amendment I would need to be pretty well satisfied with it. And because, in my opinion, you are in the midst of a cycle, whether we like it or not, if you feel comfortable with it, as I do, there wouldn't be a reason to, to delay it. So that's, that's my opinion. I certainly respect other folks wanting more time to go along those lines. So if you don't feel comfortable with it, that's the right, I think that's the right move. For me, I feel reasonably comfortable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I take the gavel back.
Counselor Pentalakis.
Yeah, I assume that the cycle that I'm getting elected as councillor in this city in order to raise money starts the day that I sign up and put my name on that thing that says, I am running for city council. So before that time, I have never, in all the times that I've run, ever received any donations, and don't expect we will be. I really don't care one way or the other, which way that this ordinance goes, whether it's tabled, or you kill it, or we vote for it. But I think that if you're going to do something, I would like to see it done right and not just shot from the hip. And it started out at our last meeting in December and has come to our first meeting here, and we already have heard people say that there's three or four amendments that they would like to put on it. So whatever they choose to do, I would just like to see a vote.
Very good. Any other comments or questions before we move on the motion, which would be to table this? If I could, I know that there were some, a few folks that were saying they wanted a date definite. I don't believe that's a part of the current motion, but I don't know if somebody there had tried to make a.
If Counselor, if Counselor Pentalakis did say, and I believe she did, that she'd agree to a date certain, if that's an amendment, I'll second it.
I was, I am agreeable to that and also to a work session, but I think it's something that should be taken up after the budget is done in a good work session, that we could have the time to work it over. So it should be in May or June.
If I could ask, just for clarification, would you feel that having a work session prior to the end of the budget period would be not okay either? Where it might be brought, it would not be brought up again in a formal meeting until sometime after the budget season, but that if there's a window to have a work session prior?
Yes, yeah.
If that would be?
Yeah, anytime.
If I could throw a date out then for a potential work session of May 1st?
Mm-hmm. That's very good.
In that case, Your Honor, I will be voting for the motion.
So would that, would that be?
Is it busy month? You don't need a motion on that.
I guess, right, we're dealing with a work session. I see. Yeah, just want to make sure that.
May 1st is a regular council meeting?
Correct. So. I can help with the scheduling.
Your Honor, I have no problem with that, except that, in my opinion, I think we're going to need more than an hour on the work session. I really do. Because there are, there are a lot of, there are a lot of things here that I find I would like to change. A threshold is one of them. I don't know whether we need to report just income and not expenditures, you know? And I would like to have something that the candidate and his or her spouse be exempt, that they use their own money, you know, things like that are things I'd like to look into. So in May, I don't know, maybe, because we could have that work session on May 1st, and then there's no reason why we would have to agree then. We could forward it to another work session if necessary.
Well, if I could, Counselor, just a suggestion, this is one of the potential benefits of the slight change in terms of the, when the work session begins and the maximum, the latest possible time to start a regular council meeting, is we could, as we, as we've done, I think already in this year, begin it at 6:00. And that if it takes, let's say, an hour and a half, we could begin the meeting at 7:30. If it takes an hour and a quarter, we could begin at 7:15. Give us some flexibility. The latest we can begin a meeting, under the rules we accepted, was 8:30. That would be a heck of a work session if we need it. God bless it. But that would give a lot of flexibility and hopefully would resolve it in the amount of time that would be needed. So I would, just to throw, let me throw that one out there. And then, Counselor Hines, let me just throw this out, and then it would be a 6:00 PM on May 1st, allowing that flexibility. Just want to throw that out there. I apologize. Counselor Hines.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think at some point, without having any more redundant terminology, we're going to have to vote on something that was said tonight. My question to the city clerk would be, are we going to vote on an amendment to a amendment to change from tabling to a tabling time certain? Or are we going to vote? And I'd like to be clear what first issue we're going to vote on. I'm sure it's going to be an amendment until we finally get down to time certain, which seems to be the choice now.
Well, Counselor Hines, I have before me the original motion, which was to table this matter for further discussion after passage of the budget. There was no, there was discussion of making an amendment, but there was no actual second that I recall being made to Counselor Pan, there was discussion, but no actual motion. So if there is a motion for an amendment, it should be made presently at this time.
Well, I think I heard it said that Counselor Pentalakis made a suggestion that Assistant Mayor Farini seconded. Does that constitute an amendment?
Didn't we have an amendment on the table, to table?
The motion was to table. There was no original motion to pass. There was a motion to table this matter for further discussion after passage of the budget.
Could I amend my motion?
Yes, Counselor.
I amend my motion to, to say that we will have a work session on May 1st, right? Do I have to do that? And perhaps a second work session on that.
I don't think we need a motion for the, for the work session in general, but if, there's nothing wrong with putting it in, I suppose.
How do you want to put it, then? How should it be to amend it?
Well.
Before we get into it.
Table it to the work session. My view is that you now have this ordinance in front of you at second reading, and some action has to be taken by the council, some clear definitive action.
The motion to table was.
To postpone indefinitely and establish a work session for May 1st at 6:00 PM would be one thing the council might wish to do.
And nothing, if I could, nothing says that upon having that work session on May 1st, we couldn't have another work session if we wanted.
That's right, but we don't have to commit to that this evening.
That's right.
All we're doing is tabling it. The commitment we're making is that we're tabling it, technically indefinitely, but we are, seem to have agreed separately that there would be a May 1st work session starting at 6 o'clock, and at that point, we can decide what we want to do.
And I'll say that in just a second.
So you're making that? So you making that amendment?
Yeah.
Which I originally seconded.
I think we've got upwards of 27 seconds, so that feels pretty good. Are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Your Honor, I just want to clarify so that on May 1st, oh 6:00, at 6:00 PM, we'll be doing a work session before the regular meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is this how we're going to handle all of our work sessions prior to our meetings?
Yikes.
We would like to think not.
Okay.
I believe that that was the vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'll let us vote on the...
May motion.
May motion. Which, if it could be reread, please?
Which was to table it?
Which is to table it?
Right, correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thanks.
Your Honor.
Yes, Counselor Heinz.
Did I just hear this council vote to approve tabling that motion?
We passed the...
Or tabling to a time certain? I didn't hear that mentioned. The original motion was to table this. By Robert's Rules of Order, that kills it. Table to a time certain was something I think we were trying to reach.
With all due respect to Counselor Heinz, I disagree with that interpretation of Robert's Rules of Order. I think the effect of what just happened is that this motion, second reading, I'm sorry, this ordinance at second reading, is now before the city council awaiting further action, and it would stay so indefinitely until the end of the council term for the council to bring forward. If the council does not bring it forward during the term, then of course it dies.
And it, it was never my intention to kill this. It was only to table it.
Understood. I understood. Okay. That was, that was quite an eventful non-event. Let's move on to, speaking of an eventful potential non-event, our next item is new, in effect, to this, to this body, and just, we're dealing with the consent agenda. To briefly recap what I think was described at the last meeting we had, it should be understood that if there is a specific item that is under the consent agenda, that any single councillor would like to have pulled in order to discuss, mention, discuss, vote upon separately, that can be done. I believe the time to do that would be before we begin reading through the consent agenda. So, with that said, and just, just to note, so that, just to hopefully avoid, in general, and we'll kind of improve this as we go along, but in general, certainly for donations, whether they're, in this case, to the Cemetery Committee, New Library Building Fund, one small but important token that we can give of our appreciation is to mention that publicly, because they have done that, as well as donations, for example, to a Coalition Legal Fund, and some letters that would be advertising an event that would be going on later in the year, again, as a matter of courtesy for the likelihood that that event would occur. That's a general rule. But yes, Counselor Whitehouse.
Your Honor, in the city manager's report, he gave reference to the consent agenda, and he says, "After the consent agenda is approved, then any councillor can remove an item from the consent agenda and talk about it."
Let's read what I said, okay?
It says here...
Let me, let me read that. "As you can see from the consent agenda, there is anticipated actions that are noted in accordance with Rule 46. This does not mean you have to individually vote on each item, but rather one motion can adopt the entire consent agenda, which is stated under Item 10. If a city council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, that item may be acted on immediately after the consent agenda is adopted. So, as the mayor indicated, if hypothetically, right now, if somebody said, 'Your Honor, I'd like to remove Item D from the consent agenda,' there is no vote, there is no motion, that is automatically taken off the consent agenda, and then it's acted on after the remaining items on the consent agenda or adopted."
Your Honor?
Yes.
I can't understand how the manager was reading my mind, because I would like to request removing Item D from the consent agenda.
Okay, let me just...
You don't move anything. You just ask.
It's off. Let me reiterate for future meetings, though, that items such as D, for the folks at home who probably don't have this in front of them, acceptance of donations to the New Library Building Fund is the, the item in question. In general, I'm going to be reading those off, again, as a courtesy to those folks.
Just forget that I've made the statement. You can read them.
So you don't want to remove it now, Counselor?
No.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Ms. Counselor.
Where does your consent calendar end?
It ends, if you, if you, if you look at the agenda, there is, Item 10 says consent agenda, and it has items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and then it ends at M, and then before you go into, and then now you go into Item 11, Presentation, Considerations of Written Communications. So it ends at M.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll begin reading some of the items, and at the end, hearing no items be pulled off, we'll vote on it as a whole. Item A, Acceptance of the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation Piscataqua Region Grant for $1,000. The second item, Acceptance of the Wellness Grant for $3,400. Third, Acceptance of Donations to the Cemetery Committee. Those three donations this evening are from Alan and Terry Norelli for $25, Ben &amp; Court Chiropractic for $25, and from John Goyette and Marjorie Long for $50. The fourth item are Acceptance of Donations to the New Library Building Fund. They include the following, pull a voice, leaving would be a problem, the, the following items. Ruth and Michael Sadowski, $10. Nicholas and Leah Ashelman for $100. Todd and Lisa Hansen for $100. Seacoast Airport Service, Inc., $100. John and Ann Walker, $100. Seacoast African American Cultural Center, $250. Benoit R. and Andrea St. Jean, $500. John and Skymar, $1,000. Phyllis Eldridge, $1,000. Barbara Fransozzo, $2,000. Thomas Ahern, $2,000. The fifth item in the consent agenda is an acceptance of donations to the Coalition Legal Fund, in this case, the $500 contribution from the town of Hebron, and a $3,000 contribution from the town of Sandwich. The sixth item is a letter from Sarah Curtin, American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, requesting permission to hold the Second Annual Out of the Darkness Community Walk on Saturday, September 30th, 2006, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Skipping to other items, you see a number of letters. Letter from Marjorie Hubbard, Greater Portsmouth Chamber of Commerce, this is Item K, requesting permission to hang Portsmouth Harbor Trail Flags at 26, rather, key sites for the 2006 season. The next item, letter from Beth Harnett, Step It Up Seacoast, requesting permission to hold the Spring Kickoff the Season Community Walk on Saturday, April 8th, 2006, at 9:00 AM. And the final item in the consent agenda, letter from Mary Carrie Foley, Student Council Advisor, and Nora Hapney, Student Council President, requesting permission for Student Government Day 2006, which will be held on Tuesday, April 18th, 2006. There were a few other items not mentioned, but those were not about dates or donations, that's why they weren't read. So with that, I will accept, entertain any motion in this regard.
Motion, I'd move that the council accept the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. The next item deals with Presentation and Consideration of Written Communications and Petitions. The first item in this part of the agenda is a letter from Attorney David Klingbeon, requesting the approval of easements and licenses for footings and building features that protrude under and over city property at 154, 156, and 158 Fleet Street. And perhaps the city manager has comments on this issue.
Thank you, Your Honor. For your information, this item requests easements and licensing as you described for footings for Fleet Street properties located at 154, 156, and 158 Fleet Street. The aforementioned property is located from, across from Gillies and directly behind the Franklin Block at 75 Congress Street. The planning board in October voted to unanimously grant site review approval for this new four-story building, replacing the existing two-and-a-half-story wood-framed building. Historic District Commission approval has also been granted. One of the planning board's stipulations was that the approval from the city council be obtained as follows, that the construction management plan include, but not limited to, all licenses and easements shall be approved by the city through the city attorney, planning department, and Department of Public Works, which shall be presented and approved by the city council prior to the issuance of a building permit. It was the intent of the stipulation to allow the city council to act without referring the matter back to the planning board for review. However, the city attorney will need to review and approve the documents as to the content and form. And basically, the, the city council would move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute any licenses, easements, or other similar agreements as may be required of these properties.
Thank you very much. Entertain a motion on this issue?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Oh, oh, sorry, discussion.
Discussion, thank you. Mr. Mahacko, on, I know similarly, on the overhang that's on the former Bananas Building, there is a fee that comes to the city. With the, are there any fees that come to the city for the overhang over the sidewalk on this particular building?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that.
In the most recent examples of when the councils approve these kind of, some cases easement, some cases license, there's been no fee associated with them. It's, for example, a footing under a sidewalk or an overhang way up over the sidewalk, and council is not determined in the past to assess a fee on those.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehouse.
One more issue, and that is, there's an alleyway just adjacent to this piece of property. Now, I haven't been following this through the planning board stage, but they, they are not encroaching upon that alleyway. Is that true, Mr. Sullivan?
I am not familiar enough with the project to answer that question.
I don't know either. If I can get back to you and get you...
I wish you would. It's very important. It's always been a right-of-way.
Well, if there's any legal right-of-way, certainly they can't encroach on it, but, but let me check. So there's an alleyway?
Yes. It'd be to the south of the piece of property, south, southly side.
All right, let me get you an answer. Okay?
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Reynolds.
A question to the city manager and perhaps the city attorney. Do I understand it correctly that in moving tonight, approving the motion, that to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute these licenses and agreements, will, will the council, at a later date, then approve, be asked to approve the construction management plan as a whole, or is this, is this the time we act on it now? Is this the only time that we act on it?
My understanding is that this will be the only time the council will act on it.
But I'd like to add that, like, in the past, what I've done is I've provided you with that information and...
Yes.
On everything, you know, technically, a lot of this doesn't have to come to the council, but in reality, because of the issue of downtown traffic and management of traffic in the downtown, I get you that information, and I will, again, provide you with that copy of that plan once it's done, as I have in the past.
Yes, you have done an excellent job of that in the past. Thanks.
Assistant Mayor.
Yeah, I'd just point out for the council, these have come before us on a regular basis. They typically, the footings and the windowsills are what we're talking about, and this is pretty standard procedure.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing nothing else, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item, excuse me, is a letter from Attorney Thomas Keen, requesting that the city council reconsider its December 19th, 2005 approval of the bond resolution for a $15 million bond to purchase the garage to be built by Harbor Corp., LLC. And this may be either for the city manager or city attorney on this one.
I would defer to the city attorney on this matter.
On the receipt of this letter from attorneys for, for Ocean Properties and 976 Realty Trust, I reviewed the letter with bond counsel from Boston Law Firm of Edwards, Angel, Palmer and Dodge, as well as the city's financial advisor, as indicated in my memorandum. Both of those individuals indicated to me that they had considered these issues, as they always would, in connection with any city borrowing endeavor, and had determined that the resolution was properly passed, but properly before the city council, with a proper public benefit, and was properly passed by the council. I concur in all of those findings. I believe that what's really happening here is that Ocean Properties is continuing in its historical effort, and successful past effort, I might add, to confront its competition in the local hotel industry by bringing lawsuits. Mr. Ramsey's Hotel, for example, on Market Street, has been held up for at least five years by these tactics. What you see in front of you tonight is the precursor to the similar kind of lawsuit being brought in connection with the Sheraton expansion and the city's parking garage and the Thousand-Seat Conference Center, which the council has indicated is an important public benefit to the city. My advice, therefore, in light of all that, to the city council, is to simply accept this letter, place it on file. That will have the, the effect of denying the request for reconsideration, and will frankly, probably, open the door for what at this point seemed like the inevitable lawsuits.
Thank you very much.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Counsel Whitehouse.
No, I was going to make the motion, I'm sorry, but when we do take the final vote, I'm asking for roll call, please.
Okay. Counsel Panalakis.
Counselor, I'd like to know how we get drawn into a lawsuit because we make a decision, that's right.
You know, this is America.
American way.
And one of the things that sort of distinguishes this country maybe from everywhere else in the world is that pretty much anybody can bring a lawsuit pretty much anytime they want, and that's what's happening here, if they have the resources.
Will that delay the project?
Whether or not this will delay the project remains to be seen. I, I do not believe, personally, that any, any lawsuit brought over the bonding issue will ultimately be successful. Therefore, it should not delay the project, given that the time period for design and permitting of the project should take longer than the time period necessary to resolve the lawsuit. There may well be other lawsuits brought on other issues as time goes on, and it is frankly entirely possible that, as in the case, let's say, of Mr. Ramsey's Hotel, that such lawsuits could delay the project.
Anybody? Yes, Counsel Reynolds.
Actually, follow-up question prompted by Attorney Sullivan just said, in that we anticipate a suit to be brought, is there anything that prevents the expected bringer of that suit from simply waiting while the project, in other words, if they are going to file a suit, do they have to file it in a timely way, a certain period following our action that they're objecting to, or can they wait the two years in which we're designing the project?
I believe the answer to your question is yes. This particular lawsuit over bonding would have to be brought in a very timely manner.
And do you, can you say that at this, what the time...
Well, I'd rather not discuss it in any greater detail in public session.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the, can I have the motion when we're... Oh, that's right, there was a roll call request.
It was to accept and place on file the motion.
Thank you.
Assistant Mayor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Dwyer?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Heinz?
Yes.
Mayor Marchand?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. The, the third and final item in this portion of the agenda is a letter from Attorney Malcolm McNeil regarding the public parking facility bond resolution. I don't know if we need any further comment.
I'll move to accept and place on file, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Okay, hearing a second, any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Now we move on to multiple items under the city manager's agenda. There's always multiple items.
Thank you, Your Honor. Get to the first item. We have approved items one and two. That means we're at items three, the approval of the Worth Lot Settlement Agreement. Before you is a comprehensive description of the Worth Lot Proposal, and the city council has the opportunity to proceed with the resolution of the Worth Lot Issue in accordance with the proposal. What I'd like to do is highlight a couple areas before the public. The Worth Proposal would abandon its claims for air rights and will deed the Worth Parking Lot to the city and be simple without retaining those rights on or before July 11th, 2006. The conveyance shall, excuse me, the conveyance will be of marketable title... The conveyance shall, excuse me, the conveyance will be of marketable title, subject only to an existing easement deed to Shane's &amp; McCacken recorded at the Rockingham County Register of Deeds. The offer is based on the requirement the city will provide Worth with the following accommodations. One, after the deeding, but before the city would build any parking garage or other structure on the site, the Worth Development Corporation and its successors and assigns will continue to have 23 parking spaces for which Worth would pay the city the daytime rate, which would ordinarily be charged for vehicles to park in the high hand of a parking facility. This portion of the agreement would terminate on the commencement of construction of a garage or other facility in the Worth Lot. Two, after the Worth Lot has been deeded to the city, the city may make whatever use, and this is an important part, after the Worth Lot has been deeded to the city, the city may make whatever use of the property is determined by the city council to be in the public interest. However, any use of the property by the city must provide for the maintenance of at least 110 public parking spaces. Now, that's the number of spaces there now today. Inclusive of 35 parking spaces to be reserved for Worth Development Corporation under item three, and that would only be as if the city would build a garage. Additionally, the city would be obligated to maintain ownership of the property and to operate any structures built near on for a period of 40 years from the date of conveyance of the Worth Development. You'd be permitted to repurchase the property at its then-current market value. Worth Development's concern here was that the city did not just go and send down an RFP and have another developer build a high-rise on that location. So if the city wanted to put a public purpose building on that location, it could, but wants to have the city operate it, the only exception would be is if we wanted to outsource a parking garage. Okay? Three, once any such garage or facility is constructed, Worth Development Corporation and its successors and assigns shall be provided with the right to utilize 35 parking spaces in the facility for a 25-year period at the rate of 75% of whatever fee may be charged from time to time for automobiles which park in the high hand of a parking facility on a 24-hour basis. And this is only exercised if there is a garage at that location. Four, in the design, construction, and maintenance of any parking facility instructed on the Worth Lot, the city shall provide the following. A, walkway access to the parking facility from the upper floor of the Worth Parking Development Corporation property on Congress Street and from the Shane's &amp; McCacken Building shall be accommodated so long as the design, construction, and maintenance of such walkways is done at the expense of the property owners to be benefited by the walkways with the requirements that the walkways be maintained by the owners of those properties. B, the city shall provide an annual license allowing the current dumpster or similar facility to be maintained on the property. This dumpster agreement will be renewable annually and may be adjusted by the parties to deal with changing circumstances. C, in the design and construction of any parking facility on the Worth Lot, an accommodation will be made to allow the continuation of an existing PS&amp;H transformer, which is on the Worth Lot at the present time. D, at the time of conveyance of the Worth Lot, the parties will enter a written agreement detailing the credit for existing parking spaces due to Worth Building and Shane's &amp; McCacken Building pursuant to Article 12, Section 10-201A, 5 of the city zoning ordinances. And, Your Honor, if the city council wishes to accept those terms and conditions, you may do so in accordance with what the motion that's being recommended.
Is the motion in order, Your Honor?
I'm sorry?
Is the motion in order? Yeah, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, you can say that. Yes, do I have a second?
Your Honor, I, well, I'm going to make the motion. I move to accept the title of the Worth Development Corporation Lot on Maplewood Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions which has been presented to the council, and that the city manager be authorized to negotiate, execute, receive, deliver, and record any documents necessary to accomplish that result.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any discussion or questions? Councilor Bronson?
Just a clarification, it's my understanding, we're talking about the different parking spaces, that although they will be allotted, the people involved will be paying for those spaces.
Correct.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Just to reiterate, if there is just surface parking there, they will have 23 spaces, and they'll be paying $80 a month for those spaces.
Thank you. Councilor DeWier?
My question is related to that. Does accommodation number one mean that that is daytime use only because it is daytime rate, so?
No, that means that would be, I believe, that would be 20, well, let me think on that one a second. I would have to go to the intent of the negotiations, and I can't recall. Bob, can you recall that?
I understood it to mean daytime use.
Daytime? Daytime use.
I think it would be important to clarify that.
And we will in the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just say that, well, I think I'd like to publicly thank the Worth Development Corporation and the Shane's Brothers, and just comment that I think this negotiation that took place between the city and the corporation was a fine example of longstanding citizens in the community negotiating in good faith with the city, and the city, of course, doing the same and arriving at a true win-win solution. I think it's okay to comment on now on the fact that the first agreement, or the first proposal for resolving this with which the city was presented, was not something that the city wanted to, that a majority of the council wanted to accept, and that was only, I think, not because of anybody's, you know, bad faith or misintent, but just a sort of a limited conception of what the parties had that might take place with respect to this lot. And, you know, we talked about that in work session, and we directed the manager and the city attorney to go back and renegotiate, you know, with Worth Development, and again, I think the result is something that, like I said, is a true win-win. The important change that was made was what the city manager read before, which enables the city to make whatever use of this lot that it deems in the public interest, in the best public interest, as long as that use includes a certain amount of parking and subset of that parking to be dedicated to the use of the Shane's &amp; McCacken Building. I just wanted to mention that one of the ideas that has been voiced, I think that I voiced at that work session, and I regret that I didn't have more information about it at the time, but I requested, and I thank the city manager for making copies for me today about the idea, one of the ideas for potential reuse of that Worth Lot, as I said, in addition to preserving an amount of parking on the space, is to potentially develop something like the Portland Public Market, of course, to develop something here in Portsmouth that's analogous, and I've distributed, I say, information to each of the counselors tonight, and if it's appropriate at this time, or perhaps later on, I'd like to make a motion that, to refer this information and the idea of such to the Economic Development Commission for some consideration.
Yeah, that, thank you. The first thing will be after discussion about this topic to move this question, and then perhaps to address that one.
Thank you.
So before, I just want to make sure, anybody else had any questions or comments on this issue and accepting it? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Okay. And did, this may be the appropriate time, if you wanted, to go ahead, Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a motion that, just to refer the information I've provided to each counselor, as well as the city manager, tonight, simply off the World Wide Web about the Portland Public Market, www-portlandmarket.com, simply referring that information to the Economic Development Commission with a suggestion to consider that as one potential use for the Worth Lot.
Second. Any questions or discussion about that? Councilor Hines?
Your Honor, I just asked the question, since it is not on the agenda, are we voting on something that is not on the agenda this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. Apparently, yes, we are. So, perhaps backing that up, the motion would be, help me out, folks?
Suspend the rules.
Suspending the rules so that we can take this up, okay?
Excuse me, thank you, Councilor Hines, for pointing that out. I will instead make a motion to suspend the rules to allow me to offer a motion on an item that is not on the agenda this evening.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Very good. Okay, now would be the appropriate time for Councilor Reynolds to redress.
Thank you, Councilor Hines and Mr. Mayor. Now that we've suspended the rules, I would like to reoffer my motion to refer this information on the Portland Public Market to the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Yes, I'm going to abstain from voting because I have not, in all honesty, even had a chance to glance at this, and much less read it, so I don't know what I would be referring at this point. It may be a great, great thing to do, but I need to read it first, so I will abstain.
Anybody else with questions or comments? Councilor Hines?
I join with Joanne Grasso in abstaining because I have not read it either.
Thank you.
I also feel that way. Mr. Mayor, I feel that way, I think we need to read it over, and if this is something that could be taken before the Economic Development Commission without our authority, it can be done, can it?
Well, may I propose this, that perhaps in the spirit of giving everybody a fair shot, because it was very short notice, to take a look at it and be able to make an informed decision up or down, perhaps we could withdraw that, if you consider that, Councilor, and it could be placed on the February, I believe, February 13th, council agenda under your name.
Fair enough, fair enough. It certainly wasn't my intent to surprise anyone and have us vote on anything substantive without folks seeing it. This was, in my view, simply a benign information referral, but I understand folks' concerns about being asked to vote on even an information referral that they haven't seen, so no problem at all. I'll withdraw and repropose at the...
Second's withdrawn.
Next move, next meeting.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, Your Honor, the city clerk and I will just put it on the agenda for the February 13th meeting.
Very good, and I believe that closes the door on that item.
Right. So, moving on, Your Honor, the next item is a request to renew lease of the Seacoast Area Lodge Number 2303, Order Sons of Italy in America. And for your information, it's attached a letter from the Seacoast Area Lodge, Sons of Italy, requesting an extension of its lease, which is scheduled to expire on March 30th, 2006, known as the Plains Schoolhouse, located on One Plains Avenue, and I provide you with a picture.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
Councilor Panalakis?
I just have a question, how much do they pay us per year?
I believe it's a dollar, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Your Honor, I think what, I also want to make note here that, if you've noticed, all these leases that have started to come in, I've asked for only one-year renewals, and that's to give the council as many options as possible, as we now have them all on one year renewals, so.
And I would note as well that, starting last fall and going into the early part of this year, unsolicited, there have been a number of residents of various backgrounds that have expressed a lot of interest in being part of a committee, which will be formed sooner rather than later, but not putting a firm date this evening, to take a look, I've described it before, sort of an inventory of those buildings and lands which are vacant or that we know will soon be becoming vacant, or that could be, and to take a look at that and match it up with the various needs, because lord knows, there are countless good ideas that have also come across the desk as well. And I think that keeping these, as the city manager has said, on a shorter rather than longer-term lease or relationship allows us, if decisions are made along those lines, advisory statements, to be able to do something about them without having to wait multiple years if we get to that point. Help, get the council here.
I'd just like to note that we have numerous organizations within this city that pay very high cost, even taxes and whatnot, to us, and here we have two, one right after the other, that get free room and board, and I'm just curious how this ever occurred. I mean, it does not seem like a good way to deal with city property that belongs to everyone in the city.
That's duly noted. I saw a few other hands. Councilor Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I also want to say that I agree with the making of a committee. I know on the planning board, we had looked at this issue many times on what to do with these type of properties, and if you were making a committee, I think having a representative from the planning board on that committee as well, and just for the record, I would be very interested in sitting on that committee as well.
That also is duly noted. Thank you very much, Counselor. Anybody, yes?
Question, who pays utilities such as electric?
They pay everything.
They pay that. And according to the letter, they have made some, done some work on it.
Right. They are required to make all improvements.
Very good. Any other, I see nothing else? Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is.
Yes, there is, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is a request to dispose of surplus vehicles. The city currently has seven surplus vehicles for disposal. I've given you a list. In the past, we've sold the surplus vehicles through sealed bid process, in which the vehicle is sold to the highest bidder. According to the city ordinance, Section 1505, property valued at more than $500 must receive approval from the city council prior to bidding.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilor?
I move to authorize the city manager to dispose of surplus vehicles as a sealed bid, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Smith?
Question. On those bids, is that something, do you do them on an individual, or do you do them as a lot of all cars at once?
I believe we can, we do them as individual, and they can also, somebody can then put in seven bids for one of each vehicle.
Reason for the question is if somebody in the public had an interest in looking for a used car, hopefully they can do one as opposed to trying to offer one.
They can.
Thank you.
Or, for that matter, if somebody in the public has an interest in seven used cars, but that would seem unlikely, yes. Any other, yes, Councilor Reynolds?
Question, Your Honor, and for the manager, and perhaps a follow-up. When the city has done similar disposals through sealed bids in the past, do we get, what kind of response have we gotten? Do we get many bids?
No, it's kind of, it depends on the item being offered, and it also will depend, it also depends on the people that might want of this, I believe there are five police cars that are being offered. You know, you never know.
Right.
You know, some people will want to rebuild them, resell them, so it can range all over the place. We won't know until we get them.
If I could, Your Honor, follow-up question, is there, is there any, I wouldn't, you probably have thought of this, but just for satisfaction, is there any potential benefit of using a more sort of efficient public process, like something like eBay, putting, you know, selling the city's cars through eBay? In other words, might we get a higher return through a process like that?
The problem you have is, you have to have a due diligence of sorts, you know, we have to, I feel more comfortable with the sealed bid process. Basically, the intent is, so there is, that the bid is there, and we open the bids in the presence of others, and the highest bid gets it as-is, and that's it, you're done. eBay, I don't think we've ever explored that, but I don't know how much more we'd probably get off of eBay for a vehicle of that sort. I suppose I can explore it for the next time to see and check with the legal department to see what we can do. I don't know if those would be considered sealed bids or not, so we may have to adjust our ordinance or something, but the next time, we can take a look at that. But I don't think, I mean, really, it's not a material amount of money that we're talking about here.
It's small potatoes, but I was just wondering if we might...
I think we can take a look at it.
Get better return.
It's probably an interesting idea to take a look at, but the key here is public trust and the ability to make sure that everybody feels they've had a level playing field to get these.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment. Mr. Mahacko, can we also make sure that that goes in the community newsletter, so that other people in the public can have an opportunity to...
Excellent idea.
Let them know it's available.
Community newsletter, yep.
Thank you.
Great idea. Anybody else? Seeing none, we got a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, I'm just writing, I'll be right with you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is a request to fund through contingency $60,000 for overtime performance audit. If you all recall, in November of 2005, the city council authorized me to receive proposals regarding a citywide overtime performance audit. As you're aware, this audit would encompass all departments, including police, fire, municipal, and schools. On January 6th, the city received six responses to our proposals. After reviewing the proposals submitted, it was determined that three firms would be interviewed. On Tuesday, January 17th, the three firms that were interviewed by my...
On Tuesday, January 17th, the three firms that were interviewed by myself, Deputy Police Chief Linda Sesser, Fire Chief Christopher Leclerc, Public Works Director Steve Parkinson, and Finance Director Judy Blanchard. Of the three firms interviewed, it was unanimously agreed that Matrix Consulting Group of Waltham, Massachusetts should be chosen to undertake this performance audit. The cost of the engagement with Matrix would be $60,000. The Matrix Consulting Group is a national consulting firm based out of Palo Alto, California, and has a local office in Waltham, Mass., as I've indicated. This firm has significant and analytical experience with New England municipalities. Throughout the request for proposal process, this firm exhibited detailed knowledge of many faceted issues facing a municipality when it comes to analyzing overtime usage. And I think I might add here that when we look at this, you have to recall, there's 15 collective bargaining agreements that they'll be looking at. There's probably a number of, there's over 800 employees that we're dealing with when we're talking about this review. So essentially, what will probably be happening is, as they go through this proposal, there'll be mini-operational audits that we'll be setting the base for, for future work possibilities. So I think that this company really will get what we need and be able to build a base for future projects that may go down deeper into departments for reviews. So I would recommend the contingency for that amount.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make the motion. I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with MacIntyre Consulting Company for the purpose of completing a citywide overtime audit and to expend no more than a total of $60,000 from the contingency fund to complete the citywide overtime audit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion or questions? Council Whitehouse.
Yes. I notice in their report that they will have their complete analysis to us by April 17th.
That is what we're aiming for, Counselor.
In looking at the schedule of events for us in reference to budgeting, we will be receiving the budget on March 21st. So I hope that report will be, I mean, we'll be receiving the budget April 21st. So I hope that report will be part of our budget presentation.
We will make every effort. It may slip, but I would rather have it slip two weeks and have it, you know, be the proper report. And you'll certainly have it. You have to remember that the, this information will be useful for you as you start going through the process. You're really kicking the high gear going into the process in May, when you start going into work sessions. You have your public hearing with the, on May 2nd, and then thereafter, you hit into the, to the, to the work sessions with the departments. So it would be my hope to have it to you before the end of April, and best, April 17th.
The reason why I ask for that, Mayor, is I can imagine how thick it's going to be, how spiral-bound and fancy-looking with graphics and chats and informational, and I'm going to have to read that two or three times to grasp it.
And the thing is, I know you will. And I mean, as a compliment. I think I said, Council Smith and then Council Dwyer.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, as I will be supporting this, because I realize that this was something that was done by a prior council. My frustration with it is the fact that we're looking at an overtime of all departments, yet I don't think it's really looking at one of our largest departments, which is our schools. The schools have over 486 employees and seven different bargaining units. However, of the total overtime expenditure, you're only looking at 5% of the overtime expenditure of $1.85 million. I realize we're looking at the municipal, the school, and the police, but of our largest part of our budget, the smallest part is being looked at of overtime for the schools is only 5% when it compares to the, for the numbers that I have in front of me. And I hope that there is some way, at another time, when we're looking at departments, we'll be able to do a more, a fair way of looking at all the departments across, as a whole, on an audit situation. Thank you.
I don't...
If I might, excuse me.
Yeah. Go ahead and explain.
The genesis of why we did it this way is pretty much what I said earlier. It is to go across all municipal, police, fire, and the school board. The next step might be to build on these, the findings that you have here. Now, there may not be a substantial amount of findings coming out of the school department, but there will be a review that's done. So there will be a review of collective bargaining agreements. So the next item might be, you know, if you're satisfied with this company, what this does is set the foundation for possibly future, and I like to call them operational reviews rather than performance audits, with all due respect to Council Panalakis. But, so now you are setting the stage for those. Now, the next step may be fire, police, municipal, or schools, and that will be the next step we'll take. So this sets the foundation, and that's why the cost is the way it is. I mean, you're going to have to ramp up to get, like I said, mini-operational audits before you can actually get into the whole issue, why overtime and what accounts for it. So I don't disagree with you, but I think the charge from the council in November was to try to go across all areas, and this was the area that they seem had common ground. Doesn't mean that in the future, we can't go to the next step. Just follow-up comment. I thank you, Mr. Manager, for bringing that out. I agree. I think that starting as overtime is a good place to start, and I'm glad to hear that this will be the beginning of a process to be looking at other areas and hopefully become a way of doing the process as time continues. Thank you.
And Council Dwyer?
I too am going to be voting in favor. I thought the proposal was very comprehensive and clear in terms of what we were getting, but I wanted to build on what Council Whitehouse was saying, and I wonder if it might be possible to have an interim report without adding additional resources or dollars to it, but an interim report that would give us some sense, a little bit closer to the budget time. It might be to the Joint Budget Committee or to some body, but we would begin getting a sense, even if it was for one department, would give us a sense of what we're going to get.
Sure.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, I mean, just a headline report.
But I would prefer it going to this body, because you are the ones that ultimately have engaged this.
Any other questions or comments? Actually, I have a quick comment, so I'll hand it over. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chair recognizes the mayor.
Thank you. Couple of, first, in the effort to fully disclose, I was surprised at, but not in a negative way at all, looking at the firm that was selected through the process, that one of the members on the proposal is somebody who, in a previous life, I used to do, I think most of you probably know, I used to do municipal audits for a living. One of the individuals on that list is somebody who, not with this company, I never worked for this company, for a prior company, was in the same organization. So, you know, for what that's worth, say that, but I'm very excited about the process in general. The second thing I would say is to add on to what Council Dwyer just said, that I think it's probably realistic, the depth of which we'll see as time goes on, but to get some kind of a feel before you complete the entire process as to what the general direction is, so that it helps inform us as a body, as well as the departments, what some of the likely results are going to be, almost in preliminary executive summary form, if you want to think of it that way. That's, would not be an unusual request for this sort of thing. And the final thing is, I'll say from my own reaction, that although some of the numbers that I had thought about for what this might cost earlier were less than what this is, I would say, A, that I think that this, I think this will deliver value for the amount of work that will be done. And I think the thing that contributes to the somewhat higher costs than maybe what I originally anticipated is to think of it this way. If you're going to deal with overtime cost, before you can really study that, you obviously have to study, to some extent, the work that is done to get you to overtime cost. And so it's much more comprehensive in nature. And I think that Council Smith's thought that in an ideal setting, it would be something that would be more evenly distributed in terms of, in this sense, the overtime effect. But the thing that will be evenly distributed is the need to take a good look at all departments as part of this process, and that's where it could act as a good baseline, if they do a good job and if the council wants to move forward in similar ways down the line. This is a good baseline with which to go. So excited for that, and will support this.
Any comments responsive to the mayor? If not, I'll return the cable.
Council Reynolds?
Yeah, just one final comment. I wanted to publicly thank the city manager, as well as his committee of Deputy Chief Decesa, Fire Chief Leclerc, Public Works Director Steve Parkinson, and Finance Director Judy Blanchard. I think they did a tremendous job. The proposal looks excellent. You know, the firm selected looks excellent. I'm pretty, I'm very excited about the, you know, the work we're going to have done and the report. I think it's going to be very useful, so glad to see it and look forward to getting it.
Thank you. I believe there's a motion on the floor. Seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And that's all I have, Your Honor. And if there are any questions from the city council, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Now we have a few different items under different individuals on the council. Under my name, we've got a few different pieces, the first being appointments. I believe, if I understand correctly, that tonight, these would be simply to, for consideration, and that at the next meeting, which is February 13th, we would go ahead and vote on those that are being considered?
Would you tell us if this is a new application or a reappointment?
Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe you have one in there anyway, to be voted on.
Yes, to vote on.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. So, most will be for consideration. The final one that we'll be reading will be for a final vote. The first one will be in traffic and safety. It'll be Ted Gray. That is a reappointment. And of course, with any of these, as has been traditional, if you have any questions, comments about any of these folks, feel free to contact me at any time between now and the next meeting. The second is also a reappointment for traffic and safety. Herb Bunnell, seeking reappointment. The third, also a reappointment in traffic and safety, John Connors.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, just, the Traffic and Safety Committee is certainly a committee that, on which experience is valued, but I was just wondering, did we get, were there any other applicants for these vacancies, or was, were these sort of reappointments without contesting, without contestants?
This is a great question. Actually, the second item, it's a bit of a good teaser. The second item deals with a committee that's being formed, dealing with board and commission appointment process in general. That actually dovetails pretty well into that. But specifically, and this will be my first of numerous beggings, I regret that I didn't beg earlier tonight in this regard, but you can expect it as the norm, that for those of you at home, those remaining here tonight, that are interested in getting involved in any of our boards or commissions, I think one of the early things that I've learned from going through is that, generally speaking, the problem is not too many people. The problem, far and away, is that we would love to see more people of all sorts, of all backgrounds in the community, that would like to find, that find this as a really exciting, interesting way to get involved in a very direct way in the community. So you're hearing about some of these tonight. Generally speaking, I'd have to dig my recollection here, there wasn't a lot of, the bad news is, there wasn't necessarily a lot of competition in terms of lots of extra slots. In most cases, there were none, such situations. The good news is, I think, I felt, and I'm not just saying this, I felt pretty fortunate that in those cases where we had an exact number of people, or that sort of thing occurred, that we had really good people. And I don't think it's a coincidence. I think that folks that generally apply for these sort of things, bring a lot to the table and care a lot about their community to begin with, and I don't think it's too incidental. But certainly, in the long run, what we're looking for is a tremendous amount of additional recruitment, both active in terms of the council, other members of the community. And in a second, we'll discuss a few ideas that have already come up, and in the bigger picture, the appointment of this committee, that hopefully in the next few months will generate a lot of additional ways to recruit and help clean up the nomination and confirmation process. Long answer to a short question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's right. Council Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that the, on the Traffic and Safety Committee, we do have two openings, and I have been approached by two people who should be filling out applications and getting them in. And last I recall, too, on the planning board, there were two openings on that as well. And of course, people are always welcome to go to the website to get more and see what there are for openings and download the application.
That's right. And in a second, again, we can discuss it a little further here, but for the purpose of consistency, and as well as time, I'll go through the remaining nominations or those to be considered. I think I just mentioned for a reappointment in traffic and safety, John Connors. Excuse me. And this is, the next one is somebody that would be going from alternate to a full regular member of the planning board, Jerry Hickmonick, for your consideration. The next one, again, for consideration, not a reappointment, for the EDC, Lisa DiStefano. And I believe the last one that is simply for consideration this evening, the Library Board of Trustees, not a reappointment, Betsy Schultz. That'll be for the February 13th meeting. The final name is one that is not for consideration but rather a vote. This is a reappointment for the trustee of trust funds, Jamison French.
Still move, Your Honor?
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good. And that is it this evening for either those to be considered or voted upon. The second item, related and to some extent already touched upon, it was the, I discussed it last year, and was fortunate that I had a lot of people that, over the last year or two, have expressed a lot of interest in seeing ways that we can improve the way that we recruit members of the community in our various boards and commissions, as well as improve the transparency, the effectiveness of the nomination and confirmation process. And enough folks that I tried to accumulate those members of the community that express interest and encourage them to be a part of this committee. So tonight, announcing the creation of what we'll call a Committee on Board and Commission Appointment Process. I would not see this as a committee that will last for years on end, but rather, in a fairly intense way, over the next several months, to examine the way that we currently recruit, appoint, and confirm members to our various boards and commissions, take a look at other communities around the region, around the country, how they do it. I already received some really dynamic ideas that do not involve additional costs in virtually all cases, but rather involve reorganization or simply reaching out in different ways and doing it more aggressively, and indeed, at times actively recruiting. I mentioned the begging a minute ago. That's a component of it, too. That wasn't on the website. That's just me begging. So what I wanted to do this evening, I'll be submitting a list of members for that committee, again, folks that have expressed interest. But for this evening, there are three folks that I did want to mention. One would be a member of the community who's going to act as the chair of the committee, a gentleman by the name of Eric Spear, you may or may not know. He's been extremely interested in this issue for a few, actually, most of the time I've been on the council. Very bright, active young man, and looking to get more involved in the community, and I'm pleased that this is one way, in a very constructive fashion, that I think he'll be able to do that. Also, a couple of members of the council who have expressed interest repeatedly in the last few years on this, who will act as liaison of sorts in this regard, as well as obviously producing good ideas, are Assistant Mayor Farini and Council Reynolds. And again, I don't see this as a long-term committee. I don't expect to see this here for years on end, but something that, in the short term, I hope can produce a lot of positive ideas that we can bring forward in the form of kind of a larger agenda, of how we can improve this process without incurring large costs to taxpayers or long, much longer hours to city staff. And we'll have more details on that as we move forward. The last item I wanted to mention was something just before we started here this evening. I know that next week, I believe it's 6:30, we have a work session scheduled to talk about the CIP, and requesting that we have a non-public session that would start 30 minutes before that, at 6 o'clock, in Conference Room A. And certainly, we can get information to you between now and then about the nature of the topic, but would request that we commence at 6 o'clock in a non-public session next Monday, the 30th. So that is that, and I just want to make sure there's no conflict on folks' schedule. I know that's early for some folks.
I would just note, Mr. Mayor, as I am the council liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, I believe the legislative reception through the chamber is for 5 to 7, so those of us who are going to go politic, we'd better do it real quick.
You can always start the non-public at 6:30, and then just start your work session.
Thank you for that.
That might make more sense.
That's right.
Hearing the city manager there.
Do it at 6:30 and start at 7:00, the work session.
Tom, what is this legislative?
That's the annual chamber legislative gathering that is typically at the Sheraton from 5 to 7, and oftentimes, many legislators, city councils, and the like show up.
So, if Your Honor, if you'd like, we could have the non-public at 6:30 and do the work session starting at 7:00?
If that works for folks, that makes a lot of sense, and appreciate it. Assistant Mayor, bringing that up, because certainly don't want to conflict with that event if we don't have to, and hopefully, this will achieve the goals. Counselor Grasso?
I would like to finish the agenda tonight. I have some things under miscellaneous that I have to deal with, so I don't know what we do. We voted at 10:00.
As I've learned already this evening, suspending the rules is sometimes can be a good thing.
So, I move suspend the rules to conclude the agenda for the evening.
It's not 10:00 yet. Well, that's all right.
Pre-adjourned strike, if that's legal.
Second.
Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah.
Very good. That's it for me.
Your Honor, before we leave the Blue Ribbon Committee and Commissions, I'd like to suggest that a special committee be set up in reference to the reuse of the children's museum building, or the South Meeting House, and I would like to serve on that. This is going to be an issue that is going to be very touchy, and I would like to serve on that committee, and I think it should be made up of some members of the Friends of the South End, and other public members that are interested in it, so.
Well, Counselor, certainly take that under advisement, because certainly, that will be an important part of a larger, I think I mentioned it briefly earlier this evening, of a look at reuse of...
Well, I'm just suggesting that be separately, a separate committee in itself, not part of a committee that's looking at all public buildings throughout our system.
Let me take that under advisement, as still considering how to best structure it, but appreciate that. Certainly, we'll consider that. That's it for, under my name, now we're moving on to Assistant Mayor Farini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, as the hour is late, I would just note that it indicates on the agenda, implementation of master plan zoning regulation amendments. Simply put, we have a wonderful master plan, and no zoning language has been written, with a small exception. To reflect those inclinations in the master plan, I think it's crucial that we do so sooner rather than later. I'm going to briefly ask the city manager, as I think he'll be able to let us know as to what is in the pipeline for work available. The point, I think, is this, I know we have funds available for the rest of this year, and then next year, $100,000, and I think $75,000 apiece, and I think the city manager will address that, but the question I'd like to ask, and perhaps look for a report back at the next city council meeting, from the Planning Department and/or the city manager, is, you know, can we get half of this done in six months or less? What would be the recommendation from the Planning Department and city manager as to how we might accomplish that with the resources that we have, and if we need to consider additional resources? I think that's something I'd like to throw out to you, is something to consider, because as long as we don't implement the master plan through the zoning ordinance, the site plan regulations, and so forth, it's a useless document, and I really am trying to find a way to not have it be two years from now when it's all done. And I defer to the city manager if he could let us know where we are budget-wise.
Well, if I might, Your Honor?
Please.
First of all, the fiscal year '06, we have, we budgeted $100,000. We have $95,000 in that budget right now for that purpose. Next week, you'll see that we are proposing a fiscal year '07 and an additional $100,000. So technically, as of July 1, if the city council approves the appropriation for FY07, as of July 1, 2006, we'll have $195,000 available for these purposes. I can get you back a report for the 13th relative to this matter.
I thank you for the city manager, and I'd just comment again, I think the concern is how much sooner, faster, understanding that we do have limits of staff, because there may be other options that the Planning Department may suggest, given their limitations and the amount of business that they do see, in terms of how we might move this forward.
Right. And we'll get your report back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant Mayor. Now, we're going to move to Counselor Dwyer, who has an item this evening as well.
And that's also related, actually, to implementing one of the provisions of the master plan, which was the idea that there would be a percent for art provision in the city as it relates to public buildings. And so, my request is that the legal department would work on an ordinance that would, the purpose of which would be to include a small amount of money for art related to public buildings, when there's new public construction or substantial renovation, and that could be art that would be an outdoor sculpture. You might imagine something like that at the library, could be the kind of thing that Peter Hapney did for the city, so it could be indoor as well. The specifics which you have in your packet would be an ordinance that would cover at least the provisions for defining what public art is, how revenue would be triggered, and designating art speak or another entity to manage and oversee the commissioning process, with the idea that each building that would trigger dollars would have a site-specific planning committee that would be related to that building. This would be very similar, and operate very similarly, to the provision that our state has, and has had for about 30 years, that State Senator Elaine Krasker from this district introduced to the state. So, it would mirror that ordinance with provisions that municipalities around this country have used.
Your Honor, if I might, typically, and historically, before the city staff works on drafting any ordinances, we try to get a consensus from the city council that this is something that you would agree to, and that if we got a consensus to refer this to the city attorney to draft this ordinance, then we would proceed. The idea is that we would want at least have five council members that are interested in having the staff work on this process. So, just, that is why we ask council members to bring it into some kind of formulation, as Counselor Dwyer did. Now, it's an opportunity to motion to refer to the city attorney for a drafting of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion along these lines? I saw Counselor Whitehouse, and then I'll come on back here.
Yeah, so, I can understand the 1% going to a special fund for the arts, but explain to me if, for instance, in the capital budget, there is a $50,000 earmarked figure for replacing a roof at the Carney Bean Center. In other words, we'd be taking the 1%, it would be $500, and earmark it for art. Is that true?
No, not necessarily, and that's not, I think, what we would propose, that it would be substantial renovations over a significant dollar amount that would trigger...
That's not in the capital budget, something that we go out to contract for?
No, it's not necessarily that it wouldn't be in the capital budget. For example, you might, the public library's in the capital budget, and had this been in place when we had done the public library, that would have been the kind of building that would have triggered the 1%.
So, it's not like taking money from one pocket in the same pair of pants and putting it in the other pocket? It's not?
No.
If I might...
Just, I'm trying to get squared away on this.
Typically, how these work, and Counselor Dwyer probably could explain it better than I, but the way I understand it is probably, it would be items that are bonded, such as, let's say you have a million-dollar project, or, you know, you would set up thresholds, and so it wouldn't be on $50,000 for a roof replacement. You follow what I'm saying?
The large-scale projects?
Exactly.
That's, I guess, what the councilors...
Exactly. Something that would be of substantive scale. I mean, for the most part, it would be new construction.
I see.
But there might be a renovation, let's say, of the middle school that was substantive enough that you might set a threshold that would trigger.
So, the money's coming from another entity, in a sense, right?
From bond, basically.
Yeah, bond, okay, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Grasso?
Yes, I would, if this passed, I would ask that the city attorney look at putting something in the ordinance where a person who would be paying this money would have a chance to pay it quarterly, and so, it wouldn't have to be upfront before the building was built, for instance, but payments that could be made quarterly, and that the final amount would be paid before a certificate of occupancy would be granted to that, to the...
Your Honor, might I?
Should.
The way this ordinance is currently being discussed, it would actually be the city itself that was paying the money.
Only.
This would not apply to private development.
Oh, it doesn't?
An example might be, would be if, yeah, of only public construction projects, not of any private.
Well, I'd like to have it include all development. If we're going to go this way, let's do it the right way. That's my suggestion.
Let me ask Counselor Dwyer, I don't mean to interject here, but I was just asking, I have no idea, is there a...
I'm not as bold as Counselor Grasso.
Maybe we start off this way.
We start off this way, yeah, there are a few communities that do that. They tend to be in California.
We're in Portsmouth.
Portsmouth, California. Okay, if that's along those lines, Counselor Panalakis, and then Counselor Smith.
You just said that it was based on city projects. This says, "Based but generating revenue, 1% provision of bid price of new construction or major capital improvements." Does that just, that part that you're saying just reflects on what we do?
Yes, it would apply only to city projects.
Okay. Counselor Smith?
No, I just want to say that I'm in agreement in putting this forward, and looking forward to seeing a draft. When the master plan was put together, I made a promise to the people who worked hard on that, that this document was not going to be something to collect dust, and I'm very happy to see that this is the first one coming out of the document, and as Assistant Mayor has already indicated, looking to see more coming through, and so I just want to wholeheartedly support this.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
I would certainly support the motion here to ask the attorney to prepare this ordinance, but along the lines of Counselor Grasso's suggestion and others, perhaps, if it isn't too much burden, perhaps we could ask city staff to just do a little bit of research, or perhaps Counselor Dwyer would agree to undertake such research, and just let us know which other communities in the country have an ordinance like this that does apply to private developers. You know, probably not all in California, perhaps there are some places like Minneapolis, Minnesota, or Annapolis, Maryland, or who knows what kind of places we, you know, perhaps if we knew how many, you know, how widespread the practice is, and what the nature of the requirement is, you know, maybe it's 1% on developer, maybe it's a half a percent on developers, but we could decide if that's something we wanted to do. If we're going to levy ourselves for public art, perhaps we do want to extend it to private developers.
Very good. Anybody, oh, yes, Counselor Panalakis?
I don't think that we can do it to public developers, because we don't have home rule in the state.
You may have an issue there, but something to be did research by the legal department.
Attorney could advise us?
Sure. Your Honor, if I might, before the vote, Counselor Dwyer, because of the workload we are experiencing, could...
To be kind.
Could, is it okay to bring this back from March 6?
That would be excellent.
Okay.
Seeing nothing else there? Anything else, Counselor Dwyer? Very good. Our final item, under the various members here.
Need to move the motion.
I'm sorry, there was a motion. I forgot that there was a motion.
It's okay.
This is why we have 10:00. I apologize. The motion's been made, and second, I believe, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. Finally, Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, I promise I'll be very brief. Please time me for the three-minute comment. The Community Council on Senior Citizens, when I approached the city clerk a week ago, I was very concerned, and I still am. It's a program that's been going on since 1972. It's an informational program. It gives a lot of advice on Medicare to the seniors. It has a program called Compass Care, and it's another program in there where the men's group meet once a week. Because of funding, and after talking to Nancy Forford and some members of the board, the lack of funding is the main reason. Usually, it's $150,000 yearly, there come some grants and contributions, plus the United Way, which didn't come through with the amount of money that usually they do each year. So, even though these programs are going to be transferred to the senior center on Parrott Avenue, I was very concerned, but after talking to certain people, I can see that it's not salvageable, and so I hate to see these programs go down the tube. They've been ongoing for 32 years, so, Your Honor, there is no motion, there is no recommendation, and they are very appreciative of us waiving the two-months rent charge that we give to them, and they want to just say thank you for the many years of budgeting for their program, and waiving the rent.
Thank you, Counselor. We're under miscellaneous items. Counselor Grasso?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask for a few things. First, but first of all, I wanted to make note, if anyone saw the article in the Boston Globe today that dealt with the burial that was found on Chestnut Street, there's a beautiful article, it's out on the front page of the Boston Globe, if anyone gets a chance to see it. And I was concerned about the people that spoke about Dunland Way, and I don't know what, if there's anything we can do, maybe the city manager, is there any recourse to what's happening there, or?
Well, and I won't get into it, but what I'll do is, I'll talk to the city staff. We have to be careful here, that you don't want to start setting up a precedent on a city street where you're going to start putting crash gates in.
Well, I'm not suggesting we do that, I just, there's a problem there, and I just didn't know if we could look at it somehow.
We can take a look at it, and I will talk to the city staff, but the idea of cul-de-sac or crash gating is something that would have to be explored very carefully, because I can think of probably 25 streets that people would like that to happen. So, let's, let me go back, let me talk to the Planning Department and see what we have, but I have a question mark, and I will, I will, I will talk to the staff about it.
And also, the suggestion about maybe Traffic Committee taking a study on the traffic would be something...
Yeah, I have that note as well.
Yeah, and finally, Your Honor, I noticed it was on the Joint Building Committee, that I'm the only one that's listed as being there, and by state law, we have to have three school people, three city council people, and one from the community, so we would need to have two other people, and we have a meeting Wednesday morning, so I know we don't have much money left to spend, but it is state law that we have three from the council.
Thank you very much, Counselor Grasso, and in light of, because we are talking Wednesday morning, and I don't mean to put people on the spot, but I think this would be, you know what, actually, I'm reconsidering, I'm going to talk to a few folks who perhaps have served on it in the very recent past, who would, there we go, that may help, who I think would be great to continue in that role, and thank you for that clarification. That's something I was not aware of, and that...
Your Honor, the plaque is already made, so we don't have room for any new people.
I volunteer, Your Honor. I will volunteer.
Well, there's one. Would anybody else be willing to volunteer?
I'll go back, it's just one meeting, right?
Well, it's meeting, and then we have some things that'll be done in the spring, so we're not meeting monthly now, it's just whenever we catch up with one.
I didn't know why I was taken off.
I apologize, I thought that it was, that my mistake, I thought that it had diminished and was not aware that the statute of environment...
But still, state is state law that we have...
Well, we certainly want to be in compliance, so I apologize for that. I take responsibility for that, and very much appreciate both Counselor Panalakis and Assistant Mayor Farini playing the role that they've played before, and ably, and will continue to play ably.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Just to comment on, to Counselor Grasso's comment on Dunland Road, Traffic and Safety, although I did not chair the meeting that we've already had, did look at that issue of what to do. They did a site walk out there. They realized that we don't know, on the other side, on the commercial side, what is happening there, so the Traffic and Safety at this time has tabled it, and so we have an idea of what's happening on the other side, and we'll be taking it up at that point. It is something that they are looking into, and you'll be receiving the minutes from that committee, I'm assuming, at our next, at our next council meeting, as soon as the secretary is ready to be prepared.
Thank you.
Counselor Panalakis?
On that same subject, I'm, there seems to be, in the letters that we received, that the people were promised something there, and I'm wondering if we have anything in our minutes of anything that was taken care of that might help us.
We have reviewed very thoroughly all of our records, to the extent that any promises were made to the people that bought the properties on Dunland Road, Dunland Way, those promises were not...